All right. Good morning, everyone. Welcome back. And thank you for being with us today in person. I know we've got some tight schedules. And without further ado, I'd like to welcome up Macon County School Board. I know they've got a principals meeting today. And thank you, men and women, for being here today. Hello, Mr. Breedlove. Good morning.
Good morning. Appreciate the opportunity again to come before you. And I appreciate you guys recognizing that we are all busy. And yes, we do have a principals meeting, but I've left it in good hands. So I told them to carry on for at least an hour or so, and we'll get back to the business. One thing that you have before you is pretty much a deep dive into our fund balance over a historical timeframe. And just want to be able to give that to you. And that will be the basis of our formalized presentation. And it can be as informal as you all would like for it to be. It can be conversational, which is what we prefer. But just so you are aware of what is being presented, that will be our approach right out of the gate. And if there's anything further, we can take it up afterwards. So I'm going to turn it over to Laney and let her present our fund balance over a historical time period.
All right, we're going to start with ESER funds and kind of a background on those. So the ESER fund was established by the federal government to provide LEAs with financial support in regards to the COVID-19 pandemic. We first started receiving these funds in June 2020. And they were supposed to be liquidated by December 2024. We had an ESER I, an ESER II, and an ESER III pot. And those were over the course of those four years. The total we received was $19,955,990. I'll get into fund balance. I've made a few charts so we can see the fund balance at the beginning and end of each year from 2016 to 2024. And then we will go into another graph of net change in fund balance a year so you can see what that looks like. Here's a chart. This is really what everything is based off of. These other two, the bar graph and then a line chart as well. This shows the fund balance, the beginning of the year, fund balance in the year, and then the net change. You can see that from 2016 to 2024. You can see, there is one note that I want to make over here in 2022 and 2023. The end of year fund balance at 1.9 million. And then the beginning at 2023. This is in the audit report. All this information is in the audit report. That's a difference of about 434,000. So we've got to call into our auditor about that. And we'll talk to her about that. But all of this information right here came from the audit reports, which is in your folder. Here we can see the line chart. It displays the fund balance at the beginning and end of each fiscal year from 2016 to 2024. It's measured in millions of dollars. The dark blue line represents the beginning of year. The light blue line represents end of year fund balance. Some key insights from 2016 to 2020. Fund balance generally trended downward, indicating spending exceeded revenues. In 2021, fund balance started to increase significantly, reaching a peak in 2022. A notable drop occurred in 2023, followed by substantial increase in 2024. Which is due to ESER, yes. Next, the net change in fund balance by year. This shows the change years 2016, 2020, and 2021. And 2024, indicated surplus years. Where at 2017, 18, 19, 22, and 23, indicated deficit years. There was a strong surplus in '21 and 2024. You know, from 2020 to 2024 is when we had ESER II. So you can see kind of the fluctuations in that. And then really, we use ESER to fund the key needs. Instruction, safety, student support. We used strategic use and reallocation of eligible expenses for ESER funds. So that's how we were able to preserve local dollars and build our fund balance. Are there any questions regarding?
Your ESER funds went out in '24.
Yes, they had to be liquidated by December 2024.
And that left a big void. But I believe, being on this team, I believe that's one thing we all said. To make sure if you hire somebody, this is not forever and ever leave end. It's for a limited time.
Right.
And that really made it hard. Because you knew that there was a time it's going to be ending. And you've got this group of necessary people there.
Correct.
And especially when it comes down to your mental health people.
Yes, during the height of ESER, we were able to have mental health.
Yes.
Just individuals solely for that purpose at each individual site. Now we're back to just our school counselors who have the guidance curriculum plus all the mental health needs.
And there's a difference in qualification between that.
Yes, absolutely.
The guidance person, and you've got your school psychologists.
Right.
There's a whole different, like a doctor and a first aid person.
Correct.
Laney, I know when we were working on the budget process, we were trying to figure out where we're going to land this year. And you may not necessarily know the exact answer yet. But if you started at 2.9 at the beginning of the year, do you know yet what you're going to have to allocate this year to balance? You know how much fund balance you're going to have to use this year roughly?
We've appropriated 1.1. So I'm thinking that's what we will use. So we should end around the 2.5 range?
You know, there is no statutory requirement for fund balance when you look at the LGC just recommendations, as well as what our auditors. And just throughout the state, to have at least a two to three month balance, to be able to have that for payroll purposes, is really where we try to land. And then also taking consideration just certain things that we are aware of throughout the district. That aging HVACs, things of that nature. God forbid we have that occur. But to be able to have a reserve to tap into so that we wouldn't have to, you know, come to you all, would definitely be our hope. So to be able to have that type of reserve gives us just the fiscal responsibility, as well as security, to be able to just be good stewards of the funds that we have. You know, we try to take care of a lot of those items of high priority with our capital outlay. But also knowing, you know, right now, Cartic J, it's 20-plus. We've already switched out the HVAC system at South Macon. Cartic J continues to run. Our guys are doing a great job keeping it up and going. But we know at some point, it is probably on the horizon. And we just want to be mindful of that. So to have a reserve to dip into is, definitely gives us peace of mind as we move forward.
Now, I think another thing this board here probably realizes, but it is a, if your fund balance is not there, our fund balance is your fund balance to use. We're brothers and sisters when it comes into this fund balance and capital needs and those type of things. We have a responsibility to the Board of Education, this group here, to make sure that these facilities are up to par, that they're running healthy and well. So your fund balance is great. But we do still have a responsibility, if your fund balance goes low, to the scoops. And that can be expensive, but it's a necessary need.
All right.
Like the Medicaid dollars.
Yes. So there's two different Medicaid pots. One is in, we do it in Fund VIII. That is strictly for your salaries for Medicaid. They go to administration. And then there's another pot that we can tap into. But those are, the 306 is a part of Fund VIII. But they are specialized. They tell us what we can spend that on. Administration is a big one.
Individuals within the exceptional children's realm, whenever they are able to bill for certain services through Medicaid, whenever we generate those funds, it has to go back in that same pot to be able to utilize for either that administrative duty or in terms of that personnel. We can't just freely utilize that for anything at large. It has to be tied directly to that salary, or we're going to get a salary exception moving forward. And so that would be a ding on our audit report. And it's just not an acceptable use of those funds. It's around 300 each year, give or take what we normally are able to bill within a given year cycle.
Thank you.
What is the cost per student at Macon County School System? How much are we spending per student?
Let me see, John, we have that at some point.
It was like, yeah, right here.
Let Laney do a quick calculation here, John. We're looking at our ADM, which is 4,470 students. And then we can divide that out real quick.
I have been working with the state about public education and stuff. And trying to, you know, the last meeting said that it would be wise for this board to try to come up with a percentage of our budget that was committed and dedicated to the Macon County School System. It would help you guys on one side. It would help the county manager and the Board of Commissioners on the other side. The state, from what I gather, is, they look at it as 70% state-funded, 20% locally funded, and 10% federally funded. And so, looking at what is proposed in the budget, we are at 21%.
County debt, yes, 21, roughly 21.
Including the debt service. So, you know, and looking at different counties and stuff like that, I haven't had a chance to look at all the different counties in the school system and stuff like that. But somewhere along the line, we're going to have to set some percentage in our budget for the school system. And that way, you guys know, and you're not, that's just my opinion. By all means, yes, we want the students to be educated and have a place facility and everything else to go to, and the teachers to be paid, and the school system to be running smoothly. But I go back to another thing about your municipal governments. You know, it may come a time when we need to start approaching them to try to help fund the schools that way with operations and stuff like that. But I think there's just so many unanswered questions for me about how to move forward with funding the school system. Every year that I've been on this board, we have increased, increased, increased for the school system. I don't know, like I said, there's a lot of unanswered questions. And you mentioned just a minute ago that when you had a decline in your fund balance and stuff like that, we overspent what we had. Well, in the private sector world, if we overspend what we have, we're in trouble. We're going bankrupt. And unfortunately, a lot of our people are at that point of not necessarily begging for food, but they're in food banks and everything else. And so I don't know how we fund everything and still protect our citizens through this process. And one thing that people see, and it came out not too long ago, is the school system voted to give raises to all the coaches, staff. And so it's almost like, well, let's give this money, or not give it away, but we're going to boost these fees up and pays up, and then we're broke. And now we've got to go back after more money. And it's a tough position because you have your elected body to run the school system, elected body to run the county. And we all have X amount of dollars to deal with. And especially this time of the year, everybody is either broke or they need more people or something. And we're all in the same boat. When this boat goes down, we're all going down together. So I just, that's, but I would like to see this body somehow or another in the near future, come up with a percentage that we're going to use of our budget for the school system. And here it is. And what y'all spend this money on is your business. But we're going to move on to run the rest of the county.
But I think there's another piece to this that we missed the last time, and I'll take some ownership of that. That quarter cent sales tax, $2 million that we had going your way, was a real shot in our arm about this. And I think the next time around, it'd be the third time, I think there'd be more awareness about the quarter cent sales tax. We seem to be understanding it as we move more and more. And from what I understand, talking with Dr. Thomas and some of this, when we had the quarter cent sales tax in other counties, it takes a process of time to understand it. And I think we're looking at a situation right now. For y'all to have $2 million, that would have been a big shot in the arm in regard to this budget here. And I think the people will come through. Their next, was it 2026? I believe it's when it's voted again. And I think the people will come through and see the need within our school system. But I think we still have a responsibility as a board. The Board of Education is definitely a priority here. And that's something that we keep working on. But I think that $2 million is something that we can look forward to. And I think the people in Macon County will come through with it.
Yeah, how do we come up with a percentage if we do that?
You can do your question again.
So how do we come up with a percentage if we do decide to go that route?
Before we come up with a percentage, can I ask a question? Does the state, I asked this of Southwestern last week, and I didn't ask it from you guys. Is there a requirement for what we are supposed to fund? Is there a minimum requirement?
I think there's a general statute talking about the inflationary statutory minimum funding formula for local current expense. It's based on your prior year appropriation, prior year ADM. That'll get you your per pupil, and then inflationary factor. And that does lead to your statutory minimum.
Which is?
Well, it depends on those factors. So 2024, the minimum was 9.2. And then we received, I think, 9.8 from you guys. So you did hit that. And some of the past years, I think 22, 23, we didn't hit the minimum. But then 2019 through 2021, we did.
Just to clarify that, I feel like, from my perception, it wouldn't necessarily be a budget cut. It would be more of an opportunity for you guys to run and manage your own budget. We could run and manage our own budget. And I think there are very clear percentages that we all would receive, and we could all run our budget. But I think there's a lot more to this. Mr. Attorney, did you happen to do any?
I did. So there is a, I mean, we can, in addition to, or in lieu of the quarter cent sales tax, you could call a referendum on a special school tax. That looks like it can be either county-wide, so that there's a special tax allocated just to schools, or it could be by district. So you could have a referendum, like say in the Highlands School District, where that money is going just for Highlands, or vice versa for Franklin School District. So it looks like you could do referendums either way on that, similar to what you do on the quarter cent sales tax.
I just feel like this is probably a lot bigger, you know, of an obstacle than just setting a percentage. So I think that's good food for thought. And I hate to interrupt. I know Mr. Antoine had a comment. But I feel like, you know, I struggle with this because you look at the list of requests, and we look at what we fund. And, you know, I'm a sucker for athletics. I just feel like a lot of these kids, and you look at what some of these coaches and instructors and, you know, extracurricular teachers are making, and it barely covers, you know, the cost to run their vehicle out there. And, I mean, Mr. Kay, I have no problem pledging the rest of our contingency once we, you know, kind of finalize our budget towards Macon County School System. I think there's potentially $150,000, $200,000, thereabouts. And I feel like that would kind of seal the deal for us. And at that point in time, you know, we're questioning about arts and music, you know, the turf and Highlands supplements and that list. And I think it would kind of just say, hey, we funded everything we could fund within our budget, and here it is, you know. And I don't want to play hot potato, but I feel like at the end of the day, it'd be a good faith, this is what we have, you know. And it's kind of where I stand personally. And I do want to say thanks for coming out today and kind of buttoning this thing up. We didn't want to pass the budget, you know, without you guys kind of going a little deeper, you know, down that rope with us. Does anybody else have any comments, questions, concerns?
Thank you, guys, for definitely clarifying more stuff for us. And definitely, obviously, I'm a supporter of the schools. But trying to figure out the right solution for this is absolutely not easy.
On behalf of the school system, we are very thankful for our working relationship and our partnership. We might not always agree, but I can attest that I think each individual here, you serve with a heart, and you have the best interest of our school system in the forefront of your mind. And I'm appreciative of that. And at any given time, if you have further questions or just want to come by and take a deeper dive into anything, my door and Laney's door is always open. And we would welcome that, and the invite is always there. So appreciate what you guys are doing.
Did you come up with the per pupil?
Yes, it was $2,059.
2056, okay.
56, sorry, 2056.
What was that again, Laney?
Do you have any comparisons on that, state averages or anything like that?
I don't. I can get those.
We can get those.
Laney, does that take into account the charter school students, too? Because I know part of the money we give you has to end up going to the charter schools.
That's separate.
That's separate.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Chairman, I just want to clarify. Is it the intent of the board to move contingency funds into the school current expense budget? There's $200,246 in contingency.
Well, I feel like there's a couple of items that I'm not 100% sure from budgeting standpoint, how they're going to shake up. And I think my intentions are, I don't think there's going to be a lot of money. But speaking on behalf of myself, let's make sure we go through this process and cover everything we can cover and what's left. If it's the full amount, I'd support that. If it's minus $9,000, you know.
And then we'll get that direction at the end of the day.
I'm hoping at the end of the day today, we'll know, you know, that way you can present a budget to us for the public hearing.
Okay.
That hopefully this whole board, you know, has time to look at and look into and be a part of. So, all right. Thank you. Mr. Breedlove, anything else? Thank you all.
I've had a long day. This is a rare case, I'm going to keep my mouth shut.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, gentlemen, I wanted to get that out of the way. So really, let me pull my agenda back up here. Really, we've got somewhat of an open agenda. We have Burnet Town Isle Fire Department coming in at 10 o'clock. Mr. Manager, I see Mr. Curtis and Mr. Thomas back there, I think. Let's go ahead and bring up Southwestern Community College.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you once more for the opportunity just to come and maybe answer some questions. And I don't have a tremendous amount of additional stuff to add to it, based on our conversation last week. Don't necessarily envy you in your position because I know that this is the same thing I have to do with our college budget. Got to make priorities, got to set, you know, percentages of whatever. But this is an opportunity just to say thank you for your support once again over the years, especially with the burn tower and the building and the prop that we've got going on and the programs that we have going on. Operations, you know, that is what it is from our point of view of our need. Because you got to pay the bills, electric, the water. The capital has been deferred for a number of years. And I have spoken with county manager and visited with you all last time. Just if we can create a plan, you know, it is there, there is a need there. And, you know, it's a lot to necessarily take off at one bite. But if we can create a plan and then have some sort of understanding for that unexpected emergency, that whatever that may be, I don't know. Hopefully none. But, you know, sometimes things happen, and we just have to understand what we need to do to address those issues, so.
Mr. Thomas, the real reason I wanted to talk to you again, I felt like we had a really strong response from this board about the CDL program. And I really wanted to see if there's a way you could follow up with us on the next steps, maybe a feasibility study. Is this something we can even achieve? And I'm looking out at fire departments and law enforcement and school bus drivers. And I really want to kind of take that a little bit farther and at least just maybe. present to us the next steps.
Okay.
You know, and more of a feasibility study, just something that's really, I saw you back there and I feel like we had a good, strong response. And I think it'd help us regionally.
I felt very positive about our conversation also. And we can do that. CDL is through our ConEd Division, our Continuing Education, be the non-curriculum side of the house. So we can get with our dean on that and do a needs assessment, feasibility study, and then bring that back to you at a later date. It'll, you know, take us probably the summer or more than that and into the fall and see what we do, because they do a lot of surveys and they contact a lot of businesses and they do a needs analysis, so.
I like that.
And then, you know, we'll try to get some updates on the cost of paving and see whether or not it goes down. It hasn't lately, so anyway.
If the county pitches in or pays, is there a way for you guys to waive the tuition fees on the fire departments in the county?
I checked with the system office on that too, and they said that it would not fall under fee exemption status for.
That it would, it would not.
That's really all I had. Gentlemen, is there any other questions for Southwestern?
I just, Dr. Thomas and I talked about 115D dash 32, the 522, you handed this out to us. And I hope the board didn't just file it someplace and it's hidden in your messages. But this here, the responsibility, a local financial supportive institution, our responsibility to SCC, Dr. Thomas, was an eye opener for me. And I've been with you a long time. And I hope that our members here will take this piece of paper and look and see what our responsibilities are. And I just want to say thank you for this. If we don't have it here, I'll make sure that Tammy or somebody gets a copy and we pass it back to us here. But this is very plain what our responsibilities are.
Yes, sir. We're, I guess, semi blessed, a little bit different maybe than the public school systems because we do gain a lot of state support with our FTE. But what does fall back onto the county is strictly the 115D dash 32, which is the operations of just keeping it open and the lights and the HVAC, et cetera, what's on there. And then some of the capital, you know, just keep it so it's comfortable and livable and habitable for students come to it, so. And we've been blessed and fortunate that we've got great relationships with our state officials, Representative Gillespie, Senator Corbin, to help with some of the capital aspects of it also.
Right. They have been very, very, very resourceful.
The last few years, how much is it? $200 and some thousand dollars that Macon County budgets for SCC? How much was that?
About $287.
$287. And that covers that? The operation part.
Right, that's, yeah.
That $280,000 that we commit covers this. So we're not breaking the law. We are upholding our obligation to this law at the $287,000.
It's actually $397.
Three ninety seven.
Sixty seventy five. Operating rate provided.
And what we've done in the past, I'm sorry I interrupted, what we've done in the past, if there's been any, we've had to shift some capital over to cover some of the operational stuff, and then that differs to maintenance on capital again. Because again, as I mentioned, it's the operational that's, I mean, to pay the bills. So that's why it's gone up each year and we've had to pluck some money to make that work. Yeah, that's all.
All right.
Good deal.
I think that's all I have.
I guess we'll do that study. And then when we get the results of that, we'll come back to the county commissioner of the board and present that to you at a later date.
I would appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good.
All right.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you, y'all too.
All right. So gentlemen, just keep in mind, if there's anything you want to discuss, any issues, any changes on this presented budget, you know, now is the time. I do have a couple more items on my little cheat sheet. Does anybody have any heartburn with the current proposed budget? Any real changes that you want to see?
No, I'd just like to ask Ms., what? Everybody can hear me, my mouth. No, I asked Ms. Kizer to go back into minutes and talk about the, or let's discuss how many employees that we have approved for different departments in this county that have not been filled. And 20? We have 20 positions that we have approved for departments that they have never filled those positions. What are we doing with those positions, Ms. Kizer? I mean, what is the, I mean, if they're asking for a new position and we approve it and they don't fill it, the funds are there for those new hires. What's happening and why aren't we filling those positions? Because most of the time, it seems like there's a desperate need for these positions. At the time, we approve them and it never, so how are you operating these offices when you're in a desperate need of help, but you don't hire these people? I mean, that's for these different departments.
I'll let Lori address the budget and the operational part of that. On the hiring side of that, my department posts and advertises the job openings on our website, on the Facebook page, that kind of thing. But the applications go through NC Works. The departments pick up the applications themselves and they decide how they're going to do their interview process in the hiring part. So we don't get involved in that until they make a recommendation for hire and they send it over to us for background checks and approval. The majority of the positions that are open right now are at the Health Department. And they, the Health Director is the hiring authority, they do their own interview process. Several of those positions, environmental health specialists, nurses, have been open for a long time. So our understanding is, is that applications are coming in. I do not know the details about why people are not being selected and hired, don't know how many folks they've interviewed or not. We can ask for that data if you want that, but we don't get that detail from them.
I know in the Health Department, from time to time, if they, like environmental health's a good, a good one to talk about, you know, they've been shorthanded for years. So we move monies from salary and fringe lines to contracted services. And there are employees that may be from other counties that we contract with, you know, temporarily to come and fill that need. There's also been other instances in the Health, same thing, I can't remember the positions, but some of these hard to fill positions, sometimes you can contract with a company to provide those services. And again, we just move money from the salary and fringe lines to contracted services to fulfill that. They also may use a temp agency, the North Carolina Public Health Alliance, as staff that they can bring in temporarily, you know, because, like I said, they need the people in the spaces to fulfill the duties. So sometimes we have to move monies around to allow for a temporary contract to fulfill the need.
And I'll add on to that, and that brings up a good point. You'll notice in the budget presentation I had, they had requested some animal shelter attendants, a full time and a part time. And I didn't include those because they've been using some alliance funds to staff one of those positions. They have funds next year to keep staffing that until we decide what we're going to do with animal shelter. We've had some interest from some folks on proceeding of that, but we're not quite there yet to make a decision. So it behooves us to keep using that alliance money to make those contract folks because you don't want to add a new person in July and then decide in, you know, September that you're going to make some changes to the organization. So that's a really good use of those funds is to contract those folks to fill that slot for the time being. And part of it, I guess, part of, John, your question, it would depend on how long ago you want to take a look back at those positions. Because like, I was looking at the HR thing there, there's positions on there that, processing assistant at Public Health, you know, that may have been created 10 years ago. So to really look at that, what we should probably do is when we do a salary study this year and look at that in general, take a look back maybe at the last five years or the last two years, look at those positions that you all have added, not necessarily funded, but added over the last couple of years and see if they're being utilized and then make sure that they're in the right spot. If we need to make decisions on moving them somewhere else or reclassifying them or changing them to something else, instead of adding people, if you have something that's not filled, reclassify and put it somewhere else. And that way, your total number of employees is not increasing. You're using those folks effectively where you need to. And then, of course, the contract, you know, we've started contracting some things differently. The position with Southwestern, we essentially assigned those funds to Southwestern for that employee to work at the Grove Center, which makes it seamless for them management wise. It was just a good decision for us. So it's a good segue for us next year to really take a good hard look at some of those things.
I think, I mean, if you can run your office with temporary help from time to time, it seems like it's the movement forward, that's the smartest and the most efficient and effective way is to bring in outside services when you're in a pinch and you need that additional help and not hire full time people that you really don't.
One of the things we found, and there were a couple of positions that we'd advertise for part time, in a lot of cases, full time applications, we may get three applications, five applications. We had a couple of part time positions, we had a handful of applications because there's a segment of the population that maybe they're finished with a career somewhere else, they want to work more, but they don't want to work 40 hours a week, they like the flexibility. Sometimes you're correct, you get a lot of folks, if you target those to the right market, you'll get a lot of folks hit those, so.
I mean, you look at our average population, the age, and a lot of these folks are on either retired or on fixed income, and they're looking for something to help offset their...
Correct.
And so.
All right.
Thank you.
Along, I see Sheriff Holbrook's back there and Mr. Wishawn. Sheriff, would you like to address the board? Oh, and Jonathan, sorry.
I'm not coming up here asking for more money. I just, I'm coming up here to ask for, to reallocate some money that was under 4321 under the transport line item. That line item particularly has $175,000 in it. And last week, I mean, just to be transparent, at the Western Sheriff's meeting, I found out that we were going to enter into a contract with a local transport company to transport our criminals, our RITS, our prison runs, et cetera. That responsibility solely falls on me, and I cannot contract that out. So what I'm asking for is with those monies, $175,000 is to add another position to the detention center, strictly for transport, a transport officer. There's no more money with what we have in there. I'd like to reallocate $105,000 for the current transport for involuntary commitments and then a fully loaded new position at $73,476 for the transport officer. There is a difference around $3,500. We'll find that in our current budget or our new, upcoming new budget. So I'm not asking for nothing. Just want to add a position, a transport position.
Bunny?
Now, you had a organization that did the transporting for you one time.
Oh, we still use them for involuntary commitments, but on the criminal side of it, we cannot use that transport company for criminal transports or RITS, et cetera.
We've used them for years. Just here lately, we've had more involuntary commitments, you know, than usual. So we've increased the budget this year. We had to put more money into it because we were in the negative on that and which is kind of out of our hands. On the transport costs, with the state, they allow the responsibilities on the county, not necessarily the sheriff's office, to transport involuntary commitments because it's a civil issue. So there's provisions in there that the county can contract out. Some counties use medical personnel, some counties contract, some counties use the sheriff's office. But so we're wanting to continue that contract. We're looking at an all inclusive contract. Right now, we pay per job, but we spoke with the gentleman that runs this company and he does several counties around, and we're looking at all inclusive. So we settled on the $105,000 to do all inclusive. But our number of IVCs have been going up each year. As you asked Lori there, we, I had to move, what was it, $30 something thousand dollars here recently, take it from another line item and move it into the transport because those costs go up, you know, and that's kind of out of our hands, you know, family members, community medics, things like that. They take IVCs out and, you know, it's our job to take them to hospital and then if they have to go to a 24 hour facility, you know, the county's responsibility to transport. But, you know, as far as the criminal, I know what we're asking for is a, it's a deputy's position. I know $73,000 is a lot, but...
That's loaded.
Yeah, that's loaded. Our deputies, I think, start out at 1881 an hour, so that's what it would be for the deputy themselves, is a transport deputy is 1881 an hour. You know, so we're asking for an entry level position on that.
Lori, I think those transports, we're running right on the edge of that $103,000, right? We probably need to...
Are you going to get a fixed rate from him? Is he going to give an annual 105 fixed?
From our meeting yesterday, we're looking at a fixed rate.
Of 105?
Of 105.
Okay. Just divided by 12 and we'll send it that monthly?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, because we were looking at doing, you know, the criminal and civil transports, so this would just be for the civil.
Okay.
So I know we went up, and I think we were looking at this year about...
113?
Yeah. I think it's what, with the monthly, and it depends each month, some months it's less, some months it's more. It just depends on, you know, case by case. But yeah, we want a fixed contract, and that's what we discussed yesterday. So where we made the changes, he had the original one that we were going to send to you to validate, but hopefully he'll get us this new one. I think it's a contract that Mr. Reiden Howard wrote before for him, but I think we'll change it a little bit. He advised that you were his attorney before and wrote the original contract.
Yeah, we did that seven, eight years ago.
Yeah, it's been a while.
Yeah, so this will be a new one and we'll get it sent over to you as soon as we get it from...
So the new ask total, 105 plus the 73,476 is 178,476, so $3,476. So do you have a line item we can cut today? Or are you going to ask contingency? Because we, of course, have to have a balanced budget.
Detention, because we had originally cut quite a bit from detention overtime because this position would help with that. Because, you know, if we have to do transports, we are, we didn't have a transport officer. So we're sending detention officers and we're paying them time and a half of the time.
Right, to travel.
Not one, but two, it has to be two.
So we could take the remainder of the 3,476 and take that out of overtime, you know, out of the current budget.
Okay, what, what do you need from us?
Just your approval if I had that position from the funds that are already there, in the proposed new budget, that is.
So are those one time funds or is it something that you're going to be able to?
They're operating expenses. So this wouldn't be like, you know, capital expenditures or anything. This is our yearly operating expenses. So we had currently, in this current budget, we had budgeted $75,000. Like Lori said, we're going to be $100 and something thousand, we've had to move money around. But we're hoping to have the all inclusive contract. So we took money from overtime and we took money from food service, kind of sharpened our pencil on some of the things in the jail to get the exact, you know, numbers that we need in order to fund this contract. We were looking forward to doing that contract, you know, but after speaking with legal counsel, we can't. So this is our yearly operating expenses, so we're just kind of changing it, you know, doing part contract and part paying another employee out of operating expenses.
So it's not going to cut you short somewhere else in the future, so. So it's not gonna cut you short um somewhere else in the future, so.
No, we, like I said, we're hoping to reduce overtime. You know, that was the original thing with the contract. And I think with this position, as this deputy will be sworn, you know, with detention and um and uh, you know,
Patrol.
Patrol, yeah, deputy. So they can fill in on jail shifts and things like that, you know, if we don't have a transport going that day, if we need transports for the courthouse or we need a shift cover, they can help with that. So that's why we felt comfortable, you know, either way, whether we're gonna transport with that or have this deputy um to reduce our overtime. I think, now, I don't know the original budget, but um, or sorry, in the original budget, we cut out, I think it was, my numbers here, we cut out across the boards on overtime, $64,000 we cut from overtime to use in other areas. Now, that numbers went up a little bit because of the 3% um COLA figure, you know, but our original one, so it won't be quite 63,000, you know, because the COLA, of course, raises that, you know, on overtime and time and a half. So, but yeah, that's that's where we're getting these funds for the contract.
So you need us to just approve the reappropriation of these funds?
That's right. And and the position ultimately, the added of the new position, the transport position.
All right. Well, it suffice to make a motion, just reappropriate the funds and approve this position?
In the proposed, in the proposed
Proposed budget.
Yes.
I hear a motion by Commissioner Antoine, uh, second by Commissioner Shields. Any further discussion? Our liaison to to law enforcement, you feel good about this?
I agree about it.
Thank you.
All right. No further questions. All in favor, please signify by raising your right arm, stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, Tammy, please let the record be blank, 5-0.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Be careful out there.
All right, Mr. Baird, I see you sitting back there. Why don't you go ahead and step on up?
Thank you, folks, for having me. Privileged to be here. Um, my argument, still the same as it was, it hasn't changed any. We have two aging fire trucks, one 31 years old, one 28 years old. Uh, we're gonna move them to a substation that's going to be opened hopefully first part of July. Hope when we have our association meeting that I can present to them that we now have an open substation. Uh, you were kind enough to fund us so that we did not have to borrow money against that substation. So we are going to be debt-free on it. The only debts we're gonna be carrying our trucks, one of those will be paid off and uh after January this coming year, which was free up about $38,000 for us in that one. The other two trucks are aging. I don't know, uh, they're in good shape. They're not not broke or anything like that. But there is a limit to how long you can get parts for them. And if they break today, I don't know what I'd do with them. We are pulling two trucks off our main station line to do that. It's required you had to have a pumper and a tanker. So if I could get by with one truck up there, I would, but I can't. The same is true with the trucks coming in. One of them is a pumper and the other's a tanker. Uh, we have ordered one uh over two years ago. So it is getting pretty close to being delivered on that one. This last one was a recent um contract on it. Um, basically, it takes four things to get a fire department going. You gotta have people and they gotta be trained, gotta have equipment, house to put it in, then you gotta have the money to run it. I have most of what I need, I have except for the money to run it. That's the reason I was asking for the 1 cent increase, which would be uh right at the shortfall we will suffer, not this coming year, because we do have reserve money. We have about $89,000 is what I looked at. But for the following year, it would, it'd bring us into a $60,000 or $70,000 shortfall. But with a 1 cent increase on our fire fee, we would be able to cover that. Uh, currently, we do have two full-time employees. And the reason we have two is we want to split the shifts up and cover every day, all seven days a week. Right now, we're uh working on a schedule which will accomplish that. So we'll have somebody in that station all seven days. I'm open to questions or observations.
Well, Mr. Baird, I, you know, I really appreciate the service that the men and women provide for safety and uh fire service and protecting properties and lives. As a liaison to the uh Fire Commission in Macon County, uh, my ask was, give me a chance um after the last meeting to approach some folks in uh Collesage Community, Collesage Fire District. And unfortunately, I didn't get to reception that you did. You said that you had a group of people at the station and you were discussing this, and you had everybody in there that was for
Correct.
the uh for the increase. I didn't speak to anyone in the Collesage Fire District that approved of it. And I'm gonna tell you what my responses were. Um, one family that I spoke to, and and I'm not talking about older people, I'm not talking about, I went to all the people on a fixed income. I went to a younger working-class people that has family members. And the responses I got back was absolutely, we support the fire department. Uh, yes, they need a fire truck. They don't need two fire trucks at one time. We can't afford it. Um, and um, you know, if you replace, or if you buy two new fire trucks at one time, then eventually you're gonna have to replace two new fire trucks at the end of their life at one time. And in the rotation of these things, um, it seems like uh planning-wise, um, we probably should have done some better planning instead of expect our folks um to pay an increase in um in their taxes and 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 I've mentioned it before and I'll mention it again. I don't think it's right for Collesage Fire Department to come in front of five commissioners and ask to raise people's property taxes. You know, we talk about sales taxes, you know, put it on a referendum, it fails twice. To me, the letters going out to everybody in Collesage's district, get the people's approval for this. If the majority of the people come back and say, yes, we approve of it, why would we go against it? Unfortunately, I didn't have time to speak to everybody in Collesage Fire District. I spoke to several people. And, you know, and they're questioning and the responses again, you know, we're building a new substation. Uh, it's not complete yet. Um, let's complete that substation, let them buy their first fire truck, and let's have this conversation again. And that's where I'm at. And so the people that I talked to, I didn't get anybody's approval to raise their taxes.
Were they aware of all the issues?
Yes. I told them, I said, I gave them, everybody I spoke to, I gave them the ages of your fire trucks, the life expectancy of these fire trucks, what you're trying to do to provide equipment in the substation when it's ready. Um, and they just, they said, the most, the comment that I got was this is an extreme ask for the taxpayers of Collesage Fire District.
The two trucks that were replaced were bought at the same time. They were four years apart. That's why I'm here asking for two trucks. I don't disagree with the schedule. In fact, I think that's exactly what needs to take place. You need to schedule when you're gonna replace them. Uh, I'm gonna ask the question, but I don't want to sound like a sparklet coming off this. If 31 and 28 is not the right years to replace fire trucks, what year do I need to go to before I can replace it? Do I need to wait five years? Then those same trucks, I'm gonna be able to afford one. As a result of what we were told by the company that we bought this truck, it went up 18% right after we've ordered this truck. That means it's gonna be over $600,000. It won't matter. Anytime over the next 10 years, if I buy a truck, I'm gonna be paying two truck payments. And I'm not gonna be able to afford to do that without an increase in revenue. So I'm gonna be buying two trucks if I buy two, somewhere along the line. And if not today, then I'm gonna have to come back and ask for revenue, and the price of it's gonna go up. I have no control over this. If I did, I'd I'd definitely take it. But I do have some control about future revenues. I think that you need a schedule when you're going to replace your trucks. Uh, they replaced them when they did, probably because they needed both trucks at the same time. I uh, you know, my point being of it is, um, they're complaining about a 1 cent increase, okay, yeah, that's about $60 or $70 increase a year. Um, I wonder if the folks up in the Mountain Grove and uh Ella J are aware that their fire, that their insurance is gonna be cut in half on their homes. You're talking about 60 some odd homes. I may be wrong about what I'm saying. Lori will correct me if I am. But I think that our fire fee is probably still one of the lowest in the county. You know, and it's be, it is low because we've deliberately kept it low. We don't, we bring to you what we need. We don't go excessive.
To that point, Jack, and I'm not beating you up. I appreciate it, but, you know, you came to us, Lori, was it a cent and a half he asked for two years ago?
1.6, if I remember now.
1.6. How did we miss this? You came to us to build a station. This is what we're gonna need to run the station. How did we miss it? How did we miss it that bad?
As far as
Why didn't you come with us, come to us and say, I gotta have 2.6 cents because I gotta have trucks to staff the building? I got, how did, to me, it seems a little irresponsible, and I feel like I'm picking at you, and I'm really not, but from a capital planning perspective, how did we miss that?
Um, I'm not a financial person. I'm not an accountant or anything like that. I can only deal with what the board presents to me. I don't even have a vote on that board unless it's a tie. I present to them what I believe to be accurate information. I set the table for it as chairman. But as far as how they vote, uh, that's entirely up to them. If they they raise and put it on the floor and they have a second and vote on it, then that's what I go with. I told Mr. Shields earlier today, I understand something because Commissioner years ago said this to me, and I've never forgotten it. I can delegate duties, but I cannot delegate responsibility. Responsibility for every bit of this is mine. I carry it. Now, I'm gonna go back to Collesage and I'm gonna say, look, we can afford this or we cannot. This is what I would tell my board, that the end responsibility is mine, far as the board goes in Collesage Fire Department. I welcome your questions, you know, and what you're, and a lot of good points are being made about fire departments. The end result is, I still have to have the equipment to operate. When do I replace it?
All right. Well, here's my next question, and I'm not gonna dare sit up here and talk about fire trucks in front of a bunch of firemen and women when I'm I'm not qualified to even carry water in a bucket. But friend of mine by the name of Randy Dillard and I were having a conversation in Cashers, and he was bragging about one of his new pump trucks. Happened to be a late 70s, early 80s model truck they just bought with very low hours. Beautiful-looking truck, very little time on it. And he was just talking about how short the wheelbase was and maybe it had 400 horsepower with a little Jake brake and two-speed rear end and could get around these mountain roads and was just as tickled as he could be about that truck. Bought it from Brevard or Transylvania County, I believe it was. But that truck's 35, 40 years old, and he's a pretty honorable chief. It hits 20 years, we have to replace a truck? I mean, is that is that how this works? And I'm not trying to be facetious, I
Well, statistically, they say 19 years is the life of a truck. But now, that's understanding this. When I say that, it's gonna differ from department to department, and this is why. How much was that 19-year-old truck used during that 19 years? And one of the things that's good about the trucks we do have, they're low mileage. There's not a lot of mileage on it. But my concern comes back to the same thing I said earlier, too. When it breaks, how do I fix it? You know, maybe the parts will be available, maybe they won't. I don't know. This is not something I, you know, I can't honestly give you a a good, honest answer on that. I just don't know.
So I can kind of answer that question. The they do have to be pump-tested every year. They have to pass a pump test, so therefore, doesn't matter the age, they have to pass the minimum requirement, which is part of your NIS inspection. There there is an NFPA recommendation that 20 years, the truck, they suggest that it goes to a backup status. It's a recommendation from the NFPA. It's not a, it's not a mandatory requirement. Um, and again, he hit a valid point. It depends on depends on the truck, the mileage, what kind of shape the truck's in. So to answer your question, there are some guidelines, but there's no hard and fast answer.
Those guidelines are based on really a paid fire service. They're not based on a volunteer fire service. And, you know, a lot of times, um, that a lot of these trucks, yeah, we go out, we do maintenance, we do some training and stuff like that. Um, but to use them 24/7 based on what these recommendations are, these trucks are not being used like that. And like I said before, our best trucks were trucks that we sold for nothing. And we got the new trucks and new stuff coming in. Yeah, it has all the bells and whistles, but um they're not like the old, the old trucks and and so. But if my memory serves me, we had a process at Highland Fire Department that every five years. The last truck you guys bought was in 2019. Is that correct?
Mini bumper, 300
The mini bumper. And um, and so I think about going up where the substation is and some of these little pig trails and and you got a 2,000, 3,000 gallon uh tanker trying to get into these. It seems to me like you would want, like you were saying, a short wheelbase, something to put into that um that station up there that you can get into these pig trails as your backup. And but real really, I mean, the process of buying equipment and stuff should be in rotation, and I think just doing two at one time is not the the rotation that we should be in. So I I'm just telling you what the feedback was. Um, you know, people that I talked to said, you know, we support the fire department. Uh, you know, we used to send in our donations to the fire department. We don't do that anymore. They raised their fire taxes again, and so therefore, they have enough of our money already. I I mean, I I'm just being honest with you. Those are some of the things that that. And so based on what I know, I can't support. I can't go against the will of the people, so.
Well, this is how it is, too. We would put that advertisement in the paper. We run it for almost 10 days. We put it on our sign out there. Why did they not show up at our meeting?
I didn't see it. And I pass by it every day. But you know, if I get something in the mail, I read it. Um, and and so, and especially something like that, you know, you stamp on it. Uh, and and that's how, that's how it should work. You're asking your folks in your district for more money.
Correct.
If the majority of the people say, yes, we support that, then I'm gonna support it, whether it costs me more money or not. So, but I didn't get the feedback that you received. And and so I I have no idea why that people didn't show up to that meeting and trying to find things in the newspapers and stuff. A lot of people don't even read the newspaper. to find things in the newspapers and stuff, a lot of people don't even read the newspaper anymore. So I don't know how you get the word out, but I think that's the way it works. I mean, he brings up the sales tax. That's how democracy works.
Yes, it does.
You put it on a ballot. If the people approve it, then by all means, we're gonna do it. If they don't approve it, then they said, no, and we can't beat that horse. I mean, yeah, we can put it, you know, back to referendum. But back to your point, I need to see from the majority of the people in Colossage Fire District or any other fire district moving forward that they approve to give, and they can afford to give more money. So.
Anybody else?
Mr. Bird, Mr. Bird, one question.
I'm the opposite.
Your Colossage Fire Department Board requested you to do what you're doing today, right?
Correct.
That board, that's an elected board. It's a board that's supposed to lead your fire department, represent your community. Then I'll be for you getting that, because there's a board there that you're speaking for that represents Colossage. And so, when the opportunity comes, I'll vote for you to have that one cent increase.
One other thing about our board as well, our board is not all firemen. As a matter of fact, the majority of the board are non-firemen. There's Colossage community people from that community who've been asked to run for the board. There are five who are non-firemen and four who are firemen. So actually, the non-firemen outweigh the firemen as far as, and this is the direction they gave me to come. So that's why I'm speaking with you today.
That's part of the democracy piece, too, representing.
Yeah, they're elected every year, ever year for usually a three-year term. I'm up for election this year, if they still want me.
Back, I just got one more thing. Back to what the chairman's, you know, I worked with Randy Dillard a lot, and that man eats, breathes, drinks everything about firefighting.
Oh, I know Randy well.
And so, why would you guys not explore the option of finding another fire truck in a different department that you would house your substation and keep you, instead of, I mean, I understand what you're saying, that you need, you want two trucks, or you need two trucks. But why would you not try to negotiate that?
We did discuss it, as far as going to another station, and it was a fairly lengthy discussion on it. Actually, I have relatives that work for this simmer type called Pal Mata Fire out of South Carolina. So, yeah, I gave them the option that we could look at that. This is the response they gave back to me in this, and understanding that you're not dealing with all firemen either here. They said, well, if they're selling it, why are they selling it? They said, are we buying someone else's troubles? They felt it was better to go for a new truck than for a used one. And they also knew that if they get one, especially an older truck, you're looking at replacing it quicker. Whereas if you get a new truck, you get a longer life out of it. Whatever way it goes, as far as asking for another truck down the line, I won't be the one doing it, because of the length that we go to with each truck. So it won't be me up here the next time. But unfortunately, this is how our society operates, and this is what we're stuck with. I wish they hadn't gone out of sight price-wise, but it's exactly what they've done. So if we keep going, I'm not gonna get a better price on a fire truck, ever again. And if it keeps going in the manner it's going, I'm not even gonna be able to afford one.
All right. I feel like we need direction.
Mr. Cabe, would you like to see a vote here, or would you rather wait on a, on the budget?
Uh, I mean, if the board's willing, we'd like to go ahead and get a consensus so we can have your budget working at some place.
Kind of what I assume.
Can, can we use that term that you mentioned a while ago, Mr. Cabe? The proposed budget is what you're saying. If I make a motion that within this year's proposed budget, that, the motion would be to increase the Colossage Fire Department one cent addition to their tax-
Service fee.
Service fee. If it's appropriate time, I'd be glad to make that motion.
Hearing motion by Commissioner Shields.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Antoine. And, and Jack, I appreciate you coming down here. I'm gonna take the principled approach here. I'd be willing to compromise, but at this point in time, I feel like when we discussed what your needs were a year, two years ago, I feel like this should have been in there. John has a valid point with, with, with two at a time. And thank you for your time. I just want you to understand where I'm at.
Who can ask this? Would you be willing to give a point five?
So right now, we have a motion on the floor for your full cent. I would consider, as I mentioned last month, or last week, a half a cent. But we have a motion, and we have a second on the floor. And I'm gonna have to call the votes here in a minute. Anybody else? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by raising your right arm and stating aye.
Aye.
And you oppose?
Please let the record reflect. Was that one for?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
At this time, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we do an increase of a half a cent in this proposed budget.
I have a, I have a motion by Commissioner Breeden.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Antoine.
Well, the only thing is, is I see what their, what their needs are, but this is not what I presented to the folks in Colossage. And about the one cent, I approached them about it. Maybe they would have a, a different idea about the, the half cent. I don't know. I didn't present that. So I just, I have, it's very difficult for me without having information from the people in Colossage. And they, they may all very well go along with the half cent. I have no idea. But at this point, I can't, I can't support an increase at all until I get to talk to my, the constituents in Colossage.
Mr. Chairman, if you get a, have a motion, correct?
We have a motion and a second. We're in discussion.
For discussion, we could, if, if you want to propose that, we could probably, Laurie, we could probably prepare two budget ordinances, one with a half cent increase, one with no increase, have it at your June tenth meeting. And that way, we would, we would have both those options if the board is more comfortable with that. So you have that discussion between now and then. And that way, we would have both of those ready to go at the next meeting if you wanna consider that. If that, if that helps meet what you need, Commissioner.
That absolutely does, because, I mean, I understand everything's going up, but everything's going up on everybody. And so if it costs eighteen percent for a new fire truck more, it costs eighteen percent more for groceries, trucks, vehicles, vans, whatever the general public every day of their life. So if people are screaming, they can't pay anymore, maybe, Jack, maybe you and I can get together and you can give me a, a write-up that I can present to the people that I approach. And I will have more time to go in depth to a lot more people in Colossage Community. Because I respect you guys. I appreciate what, what you do. It's, 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 I hear the chairman say it all, it's hard. It's, it's hard to take from somebody that's telling you they can't pay anymore, but it's hard for him to provide the service. But then we also need to sell the fact, wait a minute, these men and women are saving you X. So they're, you're not losing, you're gaining. But how do we do it? So I would like that opportunity. So that's-
Well, Jack, you drive a hard bargain, and it's really hard to sit right here and tell a group of volunteers, you know, no. So I, can you still buy another truck with the proposed half cent?
We, we can, we can afford one truck on what we have. But now, it's gonna make it very difficult. We're gonna have to cut some things even for that truck. Okay? But it's getting ready to be delivered. We have been making payments on it since. The amount of payments per year that we're gonna be out as of right now is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, is what we're gonna be paying out. Okay, I'm probably gonna have to look at trying to cut some things out. I may even have to cut out one of my paid employees to afford it. That's, that's how serious this is. There's no fat in this budget. I didn't put any fat in it. So it's, we cut it as far as we felt comfortable cutting. The next cut's gonna be a lot deeper.
But if you're, if you're, if you're cutting an employee, that, that's a, that's a human being that has knowledge.
Yes.
And knows how to run things.
Yes.
So we're gonna create a void, take that person out. I'm not sure you can fill that back up at the Zoom meeting or something.
Well, this is how it goes. Right now, we're looking at trying to do seven days a week. We can cut it back. We were working with just one employee. We made a decision some time back to try to cover all seven days, at least someone there at the station every day. Well, that's around thirty, forty thousand dollars a year it is for that. And that's a real low income for them, you know. We're, we're increasing the, the pay scale with them. This year, we're giving them a cost of living, but that's all we're getting today. We have one employee who was, he was giving the opportunity to complete all the training that we had available for it. He completed that a month ago. And even though he is now a full firefighter to all of the qualifications that are in there, I really can't afford to give him a raise more than the cost of living because of obvious reasons, you know. Economy is just that way. Well, the other one is a new employee, and he is currently taking classes to get up to the level. Now, he has several already. What happened to him was, he was a fireman over Tennessee, and when he transferred to North Carolina, not everything transferred with him. So therefore, he's having to retake classes he's already taken before. You wait too long on some of them, they go dead, unfortunately. It shouldn't be that way, but it is.
But I believe in creating this void, I hear these other fire departments talk about needing people. And here, we move this to a conversation of taking, taking a qualified person away from a department. I'm, I'm mixed up.
I'm sorry, Mr. Shields. Mr. Chairman, so basically, as a matter of procedure, if the board wants to proceed to take the vote on the half cent today, then we can leave the motion on the floor. If, if the, if you wanna withdraw the motion in a second, we can draft a half cent ordinance for, for the June tenth meeting. We'll also draft the no increase ordinance for the June tenth meeting. And then you can make your decision. If you wanna, if you want more time, we can, we can make that decision on the tenth, if you prefer.
Manager Cabe, but it sounds like that's what we need to do.
But my, and I, I make one more point to that. If you give him a half cent, it's not getting him where he needs to be. I mean, he's already telling us that he's got a choice. He can take that half cent, and he can buy the truck and lose an employee, or he don't buy the truck and he keeps the employee. So how, how do you, it's sort of concerning-
Can we do the, can we do an ordinance with no increase, the half and a penny? And if you're, if you're gonna go talk to the people, you can take all-
Oh, I will get with Mr. Bear.
Yeah, you can take them all. And if everybody says, no, we don't want a penny, we wanna half, half cent, or we don't want anything, or, yeah, we'll take a penny, then we've got all the options.
I'll present it to the people as he and I, or this board wants me to represent the request to the people and, and get their blessing. That's all I'm asking for.
Okay. Well, at this time, I would like to withdraw my motion to give County Manager and Finance the opportunity to, to create those ordinances for our next-
Thank you, Mr. Breeden. Wonderful.
Yep, thank you.
All right. Commissioner Sherrill, you good with that?
I'm absolutely, I mean, cause I understand.
All right. Thank you, Jack.
I'm chilling.
Thank you.
All right. Moving right along. Born in town, Alhola Fire Department. Mr. Kenneth McCaskill.
Mr. Young, with your permission?
Yes, sir.
I had a statement for the record for each of you. It's relatively short. I think we're behind the schedule for, you know, sure we're gonna get an opportunity to actually speak to some of the cops if they don't. This at least puts it on the record exactly where we are. Thank you for your consideration. First document is just the summary based on the last discussion. I went back through it, looked at every point, you know, Barry, Danny, John brought up, Mr. Shields, even Josh. So there's something in there that addresses very specifically, because we were doing it extemporaneously. That was my first commission's meeting. So this gives it a little bit more of a thoughtful reflection. The second document is something that I put together, both of which have Ken's input, obviously. After Ken had a brief discussion with a couple of the board members about training and recruitment, asking for the specifics of what will be the measurable outcomes to stay with doing, that we can track progress against Danny. So it was one of the things you had asked, what's measurable, what's actually been done, when will it be done? So that, so first is the summary, second is the specifics addressing those things.
I was asked, I did talk with Warren and the chairman of the board yesterday about something, and they asked me to come up with a detailed action plan of recruitment for this department. We looked at different avenues for doing that and bringing us in compliance, where we had fallen below our nineteen members with thirty-six hours of training. I think most of the other items, other than some reporting, has been brought up to date. So one of the first things on that handout is the use of social media. That is where young people, the twenty to forties, that we discussed the last time are. We'll be looking at different opportunities to do that. In conjunction with that, to give them some additional information, we will be developing a volunteer fire department pamphlet that highlights Burning Town and whatever. We'll be advertising with our upcoming barbecue, alerting our need and advertising our need for new members and new members to accept training. We have an upcoming required annual meeting in July, which is our corporation meeting. In Burning Town, an eighteen-year-old person who is a voter has a right to have input. And we have an annual meeting each year for them to nominate people for board vacancies, to work with those on improving the department to get their input. So that will be coming up in July at our, when we have our regular board meeting. We hope to request and be able to place some announcements in our local churches that are Burning Town-based, telling them what we need, where we stand, what's going on, giving them an update. I know somebody said they didn't all read the paper, they didn't do everything. So this is a multi-outlet outreach. We talked about doing some roadside recruitment, having firefighters on certain days, get a truck, weigh people down, talk to them, tell them what we need, put up a sign, ask them to pull over. Give us a moment of our time to keep our community informed, what's going on, and door-to-door recruitment. One of our members suggested, and we have done this in the past, we paired up on a, on a Saturday or after work hours and visited community members. You talk about getting community members input, get their input. Do they want us to exist as an entity? And are they willing to support us? And who can we recruit while we're doing that? We've got some training initiatives. So I went a little bit farther than just recruitment on this. We have weekly Thursday night meetings. Those of you that have been involved in a fire department know. Some departments in other counties meet on Mondays, some meet on Tuesdays, some meet on Thursdays, and then we have other. But we have three to four hours weekly of weekly in-house type training or a class offered by Southwest, and we, we- And we, we have been not getting the response and the amount of training we need from Southwestern. I think all of the departments are struggling to get those hours for fourteen oh three training, which qualifies a person to enter a burning structure and those things as they're working on their firefighter one and two. But in-house training, we have people that are adept at portable pumps, uh, structures in construction. They know how houses are built. That's important when you enter those structures. Uh, SCBA, we just received a grant and have replaced our SCBAs with some that are compatible with the other departments. So when we're on scene, if they need a, a self-contained breathing apparatus, they can pick up one of ours off the truck, they know how to use it. It's ready and they're, they're up to date and, uh, ready. And then we'll do PPE drills, personal protective equipment drills within the station and teach those folks how to inspect it. So we have people who are qualified on our department to offer some in-house training on those issues. There are several courses that are online that can be done, uh, via the computer or whatever FEMA offers ICS training. Can't do more than half of that thirty-six hours as online training. But some of those things are real important, knowing how the command structure works. Uh, the Office of State Fire Marshal has some, so there's other ones like that through the Firefighters Association and whatever. Uh, we have specific medical topics, especially those things, airway, CPR. We're one of the only ones that have the automatic, um, CPR device that we a few years ago, because we are so far from the medical response in those critical few, first few minutes, uh, to use that device. We do have that in stock, we keep batteries and so we place it and we just swap out with a med unit when they get there. If we have someone with mechanical CPR, it's been proven to be a lifesaver, we use it. We had an occasion yesterday that we used one of those. Again, I said, we're gonna continue to work with Southwestern Community College and we hope you will assist us in demanding as a liaison that they get some of these classes back in the fire departments and what the requests are. And we don't mind going to another department. Other departments have come and we've had members come to our department. Uh, records and reporting, that's where we've been deficit. So we're working diligently to get those up. We should within the next week or so have those NIFRS trainings up to date, uh, and submitted for that quarter that's deficit. And then progress reports. We're willing to offer you a progress report on what we've done towards this if you allow us to, uh, to, to continue to operate as an entity. We do have agreements with other departments for mutual aid, uh, and we appreciate CalE. We appreciate Franklin when we have those calls, if they do assist us with big events. Uh, it's gonna take longer for those. Some parts of our district are closer and it doesn't take them a real long time to respond. Some are Ray Creek and Upper Burning Town and some of those are a long way for them too, to get there. So with community members that are active and in there, that does it. So really, our comment is we're asking for time and updates to accomplish this, to get it back up to speed and where we need to be to operate. And during that time, that will give us time, and I discussed this with, and this has not been discussed with our board, so I'm out on a limb. I'm sort of like Jack was probably go, I'm the person that this got handed to, it's in my lap. But, uh, during that timeframe, we will be looking at what a consolidation of fire departments looks like, how that could be accomplished. There are a lot of difference between the way we operate and the things we do and, uh, how we provide for our firefighters, what we do supply, what the other departments supply as, as to insurances and, and those type things that need to be worked out as well. And we will look at what we have to do with what we've got on record with the Secretary of State's office as a five oh one C three organization. So I thank you for your time. Questions?
I have a, I have a question. Um, I believe we discussed the last time, is the liability of this board? If a fire department, you're saying you need more time. When you need more time, is that subjecting us to a liability situation?
Not as long as it's covered by the CalE fire department. So once, statute says that we, it has to be willful and wanton negligence. Um, that requires knowledge that there's a problem. At this point, we know there's a problem, um, but it's been covered, um, with Mr. Cave and CalE fire departments working together to cover four calls. So as long as CalE is still engaged to cover, we should be fine. But it would require CalE to, uh, to assist, and Mr. Cave can. And to further elaborate on that, when we have adequate response en route, when we do get the message and respond, uh, if they have a no response and they page CalE, they can assist us, so we're covered. That's our mutual aid, that's our backup. That second page will allow our folks to respond. And that second page needs to be done because, like I say, sometimes communication is not great. Uh, we're on an analog system. We discussed that yesterday. Sometimes it just doesn't set the stuff off, so we don't get the message, especially at night. Uh, during the day, most of the time, it goes off or somebody hears it, or they happen to have their phone in their pocket and it buzzes and we pick it up as a secondary and find out. Uh, I have requested in other, when we were at the feast meeting a few weeks ago, I have requested them to re-page because you couldn't understand, got a tone and nothing, static. Where do I go? Where do I go? I rely on the phone. So with that backup, I don't think they need to respond to ninety-something calls as an extra thing. I think on the second page, if there's no response on the first, page CalE by all means medical. If it's a structured fire, they're gonna be paged anyway. Our automatic aid agreement, it's gonna be two more additional departments will be paged, so they'll, they'll get a message even if it doesn't come through with us, so.
Yeah, Eric, I, I, I agree with you that as long, if there's a manpower shortage or equipment shortage, if, if we have the agreement in place that you have another department responding, I agree with you that the liability concern is, is moot. So I, I do agree with you on that.
But I don't think that, I think unless they are up to contract standards, they re, they, uh, meet the requirements from the state, we can't depend on, in my mind, we can't depend on not paging CalE because CalE is the department that we know has the manpower and, and it seems to me like I can tell you guys are up to the requirements and the trained hours and the membership and everything else. Our go-to is a county, is CalE or Franklin. We can't, I mean.
We currently have the members, we just don't have the thirty-six hours of training for all of them. And we're working diligently on that as we speak.
How many members do you have?
There's twenty-four, help me build, twenty-four on the roster. Uh, we, we did lose a couple of members after the meeting a couple of weeks ago and that put us short.
A mayor trained.
And that left us with one short.
How many are trained? Have the training hours?
Eighteen.
What's the requirement?
Thirty-six hours.
I, I understand, but how many people are required to be trained? Nineteen?
All of them. Nineteen is what we have to have for state standards to be standard.
So right now, you're eighteen?
We're one under.
How many of those?
And we're very close.
Can run the medical calls?
How many can run medical calls? Six, five, five, four.
Five or four.
Five and one working on getting some credit hours back up that they need.
What's the, do you know the average age of those twenty-two to twenty-four members?
That's a good question. Can you take me out of the mix?
No. You're the man right now.
No, I do, I cannot answer that question. I can figure it out.
I would say the senior category is Calvin, you and me.
Yeah, we have, we have three that are sixty plus.
Is that how Barry?
Yeah, I was just trying to get an idea of what the, we have some younger members or not?
Yes, we have some younger members.
We have some younger members too.
And you may, you may answer this and you may not. Uh, either way, I'll respect it. If you get called out to a structured fire and you're gonna do an interior fire attack, how many of those people that are not trained, that don't have it, would you put your life on the line to go into that burning structure with or without and, and expect them to operate that truck and get you water as you're burnt, in that, inside that burning building? Because that's, it's not about violations, it's about protecting lives and property. But your life is what you have to focus on. And if I was pulling up to that fire scene and we were gonna do an interior fire attack and I was the, and I was the nozzle man, I wouldn't go into that building unless I knew who was behind me, had my back and could do what they needed to do. Your life, as much as anybody else's, is at risk and danger. And, and, Mr. McCaskill, I get it. You've poured your heart and soul into Burning Town Iowa Fire Department. And the last thing you want to do as an individual is to see that fire department fold or have to merge. I get it. The pride in that community that you have and some of your older members have, I get it. But at the end of the day, me sitting here, I'm concerned about your life, your life, all your other members and all your people out there in Burning Town to protect. And it has nothing to do against, going against you and your wishes and your desires. I read a Facebook page that you guys had put out, somebody put out. And you're, it's, it's almost like now you are begging people to come and help you to save this department. You either got it in your blood and in your heart and soul or you don't. You do. But unfortunately, a lot of people in your community don't. And we have, we're in a tough situation here because I look at, you know, your training hours. We did contracts. The contracts are broken, um, and, and you're wanting more time. You had to have seen the internal problems eight months ago in this department. And eight months later, you're asking us for six months to a year. You know, i- if I'm concerned about something right then, if we break a, and we're, we're in violation or whatever, oh my God, it's a panic time. And now eight months, we're at the, at the point, this board and this county and your department and CalE and the fire service, we're at the end of the road to save your life and everybody else's life in Burning Town. And, and I feel for you. I mean, I, I get it.
I'm curious to your answer to that. Would you, would you go in?
I'll give you an answer from my standpoint. On a structured fire in the past, I have sent my people who are qualified in with Franklin, with CalE, and I'm saying this is past history. I have been in personally when I was not in charge. I have folks who are firefighter one and two and enter structures and I know them and I know which ones to pair up with less experienced people to make sure that this works. So that's really the answer I'm gonna give you at this point. The training we're proposing with self-contained breathing apparatus, with PPE, with structure, with those things that we proposed to come up, is how we prepare them to be able to do these things. And quite frankly, any of the departments who have a structured fire depend on that mutual aid. You know, we've got members that have some gray hair in some of the other departments when I'm sitting back there on the road, been around doing this a long time from CalE, you know? So there's, I'm not the only gray-headed, Bill's not the only gray-headed person that you have in the fire service in this county. And getting those twenty to forties, and I think Jack Baird pointed that out very clearly, getting those twenty to forties to have that missionary zeal to serve their community is difficult. And whether you call it begging or pleading or whatever, I do have pride in what we've Station we built is just a little bit over half a million dollars and we borrowed about three hundred thousand. Have you got another station that was built in the last ten years or less? You've got a, a substation that's a metal building. Have you got one that could serve as, as what Burning Town was able to build for that by using grants and whatever? So we do have community support and we are looking for those young people. And we've had a few, we've got a few recruits coming in this Thursday night, so.
Let me.
Can I clear up one thing real quick? I wasn't picking on you because of your age. I just wanted to make the point that if you have twenty members and a third of them are, you know, aging out.
Geriatric, go ahead, say it.
I mean, when adrenaline's pumping, there's a lot of things you can do. So I didn't call Larry out back there, but, but there's, you know, there's a lot of things you can do. But the, the point was is, you know, are you getting those younger recruits? I mean, how are you gonna get those younger recruits? I think everybody up here said it's hard to recruit, it's hard to find the volunteers, you know, it's inevitable that, that they're not happening. I mean, every department has, has kinda said that. But with CalE with sixty-plus members, you know, if, if a third of theirs are geriatric ages, you still got, you know.
I was just saying, in your defense, the inability to find volunteers is not limited to what you guys are trying to do at this point because in today's culture, way too many young people don't understand the concept of giving without having to hand out this way, saying, give me, give me, give me back. So just in you guys' defense, I do, I understand that. That's not a, it's not an easy task right now.
We do have a real good potential member that doesn't have the training, but says he's willing, gonna be there Thursday night. We've got some members, one member that has had some health concerns, is returning and working on hours. So he's close to having his hours from when that started and he had to go on leave of absence. So he will be returning to the roster. So, you know, it might be a very short time that we have that nineteenth member up, but, you know, all of us, I don't know what the role is on every department and how many of their members. I have no idea. If I had to break them by ten-year-age groups, I don't know how many the other departments would have that was all of them, so in answer to your question. Yes.
Yeah, John, I, I probably wrote the ads that you're talking about, especially the, because those things in there?
Oh, I don't know, I just.
All right, in the past seven days, you know, I'm in a really tight bind here. You're demanding as a board, as you should, to get people. So to sound a little desperate, I think is understandable under the pressure we're under. But I think one thing you really need to think about in these ads and in the prior ones, Danny, we always strive for people who want to protect and serve our department. In other words, what I'm saying, John, I'm not so desperate, I'll just take whatever falls out of the sky. We're looking for a certain type. And Barry, to your point, the age thing, yeah? I mean, if you look at that specific plan of action, Danny, that you can check, did you do that? Did you do that? How many times did you do it? You went to one house? Okay, come on. Yeah, no, did you diligently? That's gonna, that's gonna cascade over all age groups. And, yeah, we got some older guys, but we, we don't care, but they're the ones with the knowledge and the experience and the wisdom and the ability to articulate and show the young people. As I talked to one last week who said, well, my wife doesn't want me to do this, she's worried I'm gonna get hurt and this, that and the other. There's a lot of things we do and most of it isn't fighting the fire. It's lift assist, it's car accident, it's the roadside assistance, it's the woman who It's the woman who just is lonely that we're checking in on. There's a lot of things that people can do, whether they're old or young. But we do need the young people. And I think, Barry, as we, as we do those things that are on that list, you're going to get a, you're going to get a good cross-section and hopefully a lot more young. I think if you just look at where we are today, the proportion could be similar as you grow. Which means, yes, even today, we've got more young people than we do us.
Real quick.
Oh, go ahead, Danny.
Who's, who hears from this department? Do you three have any thoughts on any of this?
We're doing the best we can do out there. What needs to be done? Everyone of you setting up fire, you need to come out and visit the department and actually see what we need. Mr. Breeden, he come down talk when he was on the nominee. I hadn't seen him since July 2018. I hadn't seen none of you come down there saying, guys, what you need? What can, how can we get? I've not seen either one of you down there. You need to get out more, come visit, and actually see what we do. You ain't never put no time here on. Need to experience that. Ain't never wore a backpack. I'm 59 years old. Will be coming over here. I've been there 40 years. I'd love to see every one of you. I know Mr. Shaw, easily called firefighter from town. I've never seen any of you come to our house and visit, sit down with us and talk to us. Always other people involved. Come to our house and talk to us. We're doing the best we can. And this training is. I support these men. I supported this fire department. I supported Cowie for a very long time. What I'm asking you guys to do is come visit with us.
I'm not real good at talking. I've only been here six months.
You're all right, just, I mean, we're just all just good old boys. Just, just take your time. I mean, just talk to us like you were.
Usually I'd be crying by now. But because of this family, I have gotten so much confidence. I have a mom before. I had no idea how to join a fire department. Look at me, I'm tiny. What can I do? You don't think I can do much? But because of this department, you just show me I can be a mom. I can be family. I can have a family. And I will be trained. I'm 100 pounds, but I can hold a hose, just like Mr. Ken. Just like Ryan or just like Mikey that's been here for 40 years. I just started this, and I don't want it to end. I see myself going real high in the future. I can take vitals now. I have blossom. If you saw me 10 years ago, Mr. Danny, you wouldn't imagine me being here. It'd have saved me.
Well.
Casey, thank you for sharing that.
Yep. And Casey's joined by her husband as well on the department, who is obviously a fairly young guy.
I think it's very important the conversation pieces not here to shut down Burning Town Iowa Fire Department. That station is going to exist. You ask us, why aren't we out there? We know what's going on. I mean, um, and, I mean, we have contracts. We have inspections. We understand what's going on. And you're asking for help. And that's what we're trying to do. Is we're trying, the chairman has mentioned, there is such a thing as leadership problem in this department. You've gone through four chiefs in two or three years. And you're exactly right. It only takes one group to take Cowie Fire Department, and the memberships start falling. You're exactly right. I, I lived at the division in the departments and the, and the friction in the department. I understand. But this body has an obligation to the citizens of Burning Town Fire District and Macon County to see that this thing is, is taken care of. And right now, we're at the end of the road. What do we do to help you? We're trying to do that. Cowie, by the, thank God that they're willing to come out of their district and help protect lives and everything to help you guys. But they can't do it forever. And we were in hopes that your body and their body would come together and solve this internal so we can, we can move on. Let's, let's protect the communities. They have the manpower. They have the equipment. And they have the willingness to help you guys.
And we're welcoming it. We are.
Well, that's what we were hoping that.
We, we do, John, absolutely. And if, again, if you read that document, that last part, what we're saying is we're willing to partner with, accept leadership and management from Cowie. Okay? But in, in, in my medical field, sometimes we'd have what we call sunset provisions. So you do this for some period of time because you're in a desperate situation. Okay? So you get the experienced leadership. And then after some period, we ask the sunset, you sit there, did you make it or not? If you didn't make it, then maybe we don't sunset this provision. Now we may get permanent. That's the merger. Okay? And by the way, Danny, to your point of asking, and which I'm glad you did about other people, because they took time to be here. We also have two board members in the room, too. Okay, so between Ken and myself, you have half the board. I'm sorry, is my answer still the same? People were at work. So, but they, they made time today to be here as well. It's important. And we, we're just asking, we're not saying avoid the contract. Your contract is covered. You've just had these two guys talk about mutual aid is covering the contract. You have qualified people in Macon County covering one, not just Cowie. You have others as well that are stepping in. We are not putting people at undue risk because of that.
Cowie is not mutual aid. Cowie is the first responders to your calls. So we need to.
I believe someone here has requested that, and that's.
Well, they have to because.
That's fine, and I, we're not objecting to it. Not, not at all, John, it's fine.
Back to your sunset period. Was that not when we started eight months ago?
Yes.
And we got, supposedly we reported in December that we were off probation. We accomplished it. Okay, so now we're back on it again. Now, wait a minute, I, so that's where I said in the document, I don't know, is there something in the contract says, oh, you can mess it up once, Kala Saji or Otto or, or the IFD. But then if you do it again, that's it.
Every month you were inspected, is that correct, for eight months?
I don't know that for a fact.
Jimmy? Um, every month? So you got a report of what your violations were for this station for eight months? It's not like you got one and you corrected it. It's been ongoing for eight months, and we're still having issues. I don't know what. Um, I, I got two questions. One, legally, uh, Mr. Counsel, we have a contract that is, expires June 30th. Is that correct? They're, they're contracted. And when, and when is your board meeting?
July.
July what?
We have a board meeting in June.
Or when your community meeting.
But our community meeting will be the same as our board meeting in July. That's our normal community meeting.
What day in July?
That's the third Monday in July.
Okay. All right, now we're going into a, July 1st starts a new budget. And if something's not done by this board before June 30th, then we go into a, a new budget year and your finances for whatever's approved. So I have a question as to statements and questions. We continue to have Cowie roll. Cowie gets paid per call out of your budget, uh, at whatever fee that is. We extend your contract until July 31st. And at the end of that contract, July 31st, we're done. I, I'm not interested in giving you six more months. I'm not interested in giving you 12 months. I'm not, I mean, this is serious business. And back to your point, what you just said a minute ago, you have Franklin and Cowie that comes in to do an interior fire attack. When I was on the station, we had three people in a truck. One to operate the truck and two to do an interior fire attack. We didn't wait on the other departments to get there to have our backs. But we were all trained with air attacks and to do interior firefighting. That's where the burn center is going to be coming so handy when that's, because we did a lot of training in that burn center. But for your ask and knowing what your, your situation has been, I think we either make a decision, I mean, it looks like we're going to have to do this one way or the other. And we can either, if it's legal to extend the contract to July 31st, give them a portion of their budgeted money to operate with, to pay Cowie for the responding. Every call that they, they're still going to have to be first out until this probation period is, is corrected, either way. So those are the statements and questions. That's, um, can we do that?
So let me address the contract. The contract doesn't necessarily have an expiration date on it. The contract has a termination notification, which is the eight months. You, you're required, if you're going to terminate a contract for whatever reason, has a minimum of eight months prior notification. That was, that has been done. That was done in July 2024, whenever that letter was. So now, the fiscal year does change on June 30th. So that is the date of the fiscal year. So if you were going to make that emotion or go that route, my suggestion would be that you, you extend the probationary period until July 30th or whatever date that you decide you want to do that. And then at that time, you would, you would terminate the contract. As far as the funding, Lori, I don't know that we can, we can't do it until July 1. I don't know that we can split that service fee to go to two different folks. I mean, if it was an internal thing that they come to some terms and they said, okay, we'll, we'll reimburse them so much a call or something. Internally, contractually, that would be between them and not us. I'm not, I know we can't do it till July 1, and I don't know that we can split that service fee.
About the tax reports, whatever's collected in each district is what we distribute.
Yeah, we would have, we would have to, we would have to do, you'd have to enter a new contract with them because the contract says all of the funds are distributed to them. So you would, you would have to terminate the contract, do a new contract with rates going to different places. Then you'd have to delete that eight-month termination clause. It would be complicated to do on our end. If that was going to happen, it would be easier for that to happen internally on their end. But yes, you can extend the probationary period to whatever date that you desire. You're, you meet the terms of the contract at this point. Did I answer the, did I answer the question?
Yeah, you did. I mean, I, I know there was no expiration, but it was a, but it needed to be discussed. So, um, I, I mean, feelings, I feel for you guys. I mean, emotions, um, like I said, you poured your heart and soul in this department. Times have changed. And I don't want to sound like all negative here, but I just don't see how in the world you're going to improve this department.
Just, just bear in mind, yes, heart and soul's in it. Just like the recruitment thing I was talking about a few minutes ago. First and foremost, by everybody in our department, what we have is a difference of opinion. Okay? Is that best done by local neighbors, friends and family, volunteers? Or is it best done by a different organization that's somewhat removed with some of the people? Because you're right, Casey, you still got a home, don't worry about that. But would you like to have the leadership? Because that's the thing that got us where we are. Local?
Well.
Or, anyway, I, I just want to make sure. You could, I, I've heard several of you say, and Barry, you said it too, Bill, don't worry, you'll have a fire department. I don't, I'm not looking for that in my career at this point. That's not the goal. The goal is to use my medical background and knowledge and try to help my community. That's, that's it, first and foremost.
I actually didn't say that. If you read the paper, he quoted me as saying 40 years is not down the drain. You know, I, I understand you've put a lot of work into it. There's a lot of pride there. Everybody's heart's in it. But 40 years is not down the drain. Just because there would be a merger or whatever that happens doesn't mean you wouldn't have a home. Anybody can be a volunteer, right? And that's what you're asking for. So whether it's with Burning Town Iowa Fire Department or a merger with Cowie, however that works, nobody's kicking you out on the street, so.
That's right. And that's what I'm saying. But that's not my first concern, being kicked out on the street, not having.
Well, I think our first concern is, is who's doing it? You know, who's doing it properly? Who's trained? Are, are we actually protecting life and property? You know, the leadership is an issue. Jimmy's here, can, I mean, we're putting you on the spot, but is there anything you can say to this? You've, you're the one that's doing the, you know, the, the monthly.
The only thing that I want to say is, is I have striven to make my opinion out of, out of this. This was all the reports that, that Cad and myself, we went down with our inspections. Um, you know, and I got everything that I gave you in that folder, all the reports and letter, reports and letters from the, the community person. I don't really want to. I mean, I think this is your decision. I, I want to leave my opinion out, but being you grew on it, just give you the facts of what we've done.
And the facts are that they have not met the standards for how long? For eight months, longer?
Yeah, basically. I mean, it, it started in, uh, well, it started out, then it went pretty good till about December. And then each month I was out here with this, really had some problems.
And are those just missed calls or is that training? What, what is that?
There is some training. Members leaving. They can't keep it up. And it, and it's easy to, the way OSFM does, you've got to have 36 hours of training, fire training, to be a member. Pretty much you can sit down in front of a TV and get this fire training. And get the 36 hours.
I follow. I recognize, I follow.
So, uh, there, it's really easy to get the training, you know? And, and it's up to the chief to sign off on this training. It's what they approve.
John, can I address one other thing to the question you had there a minute ago? I, under the, the contract, I had to pull it out because I've, would never went this route before. Under the contract for payment of taxes, it does say all the proceeds of the Special Fire Protection Service District tax will be remitted to the department unless the department is in breach of contract. Blah, blah, blah. Yes, so, so to answer your, to answer your question, attorney and I would have to determine if this classifies as a breach of contract. And then we would have to manage the legalities of the funds. So there may be a way to partially send some funds to Cowie. Eric and I will have to explore that contract. So it would, I mean, if they want to do it internally, then obviously we're, that's easier for us. But it depends on the will of the board on whatever you decide to.
Would that not be a much simpler solution? If Cowie's board and our board sat down and we reached an agreement on July 1 for calls during the month of July? And if they were on to a call. calls during the month of July and if they respond to a call in our district or needed to respond to a call at that one time, then we come up with a fee schedule that's agreeable with this?
It would be easier for us.
Can you do that? So far, we don't have a real good track record, it seems.
Cowie's here. Can we ask them?
With the two boards, I'm just being honest. Can we?
Would you?
Matt Cocker is chairman of the board.
We have approached Burnetown Board a couple of Mondays ago. We, I was not, not able to attend, but we had several members there. We're ready to go. We're not. A lot of your comment, Mr. Breeden, we're not, we're not going to kick anybody out. Members are open just as, just as much as anybody else in the community. We're, we're not going in to clean the house. We're not wanting to do that whatsoever. Based on our calculations, call volume budget, it does come out to about a thousand dollars per call. By the time you pay, all reimbursement on diesel, people wearing their own equipment, tires and stuff like that. So there is a figure there that we feel would be appropriate, but worth the mercy of the law.
But that includes overhead?
Yes, that's, that's. All reimbursement and overhead.
You guys can see, I mean, how passionate this board is to not dissolve or merge a fire department. I mean, it's, but we have to do so. Back to the chairman's point, we thought we had this done from the May 13th meeting to the May 22nd meeting and we hit a roadblock and and here on the, today, we're still.
I'm looking for resolution. Let me interrupt you, Mr. Sherrill.
Go ahead.
To finish your.
Go ahead.
Question right now is, the only thing that I'm really aware of now is what information has been given to me that they're, they're below membership. They're at 16 now by what I've had. What I've been given. So that and some reports being given, going to the state, they're still behind on, though, by 21 or something like that.
That number greatly decreased and decreasing every day. I just started out 38. Yesterday when we had a, a call that went south.
I mean, no disrespect, and we can talk about this all day long, but we shouldn't even be here. I mean, those reports should be done immediately. You know, I mean, you, and I mean, they really should. And it's all leadership and that's what we've been talking about. So I, I think, just like the chairman said, we need resolution.
Well, I think I'm going to bump us along here. I feel like last week, this is what we were looking for. You know, was, I mean, don't take this the wrong way, but you know, some, some attentiveness and.
We tried to provide you with what you requested.
Yeah, well, stick around just a minute if you don't care. I feel like I'm, we're a little principled. I'd like to set a date and a few of the concerns that I still have are what we discussed yesterday, and I just want to put this on record. More or less looking out for Cow, for Burnetown Iowa. And I'm worried about the small things. Okay. I want you guys to stay on your feet and I sincerely mean that. But I, I agree with Commissioner Sherrill. I'm not willing to give it six months to a year. We, we kind of have to act in a mode of desperation. Okay? But I also feel like you kind of got to hope for the best, but plan for the worst. And let's just say there is a, a merger or an acquisition. I feel like this needs to be well thought out, friendly, you know, keys to trucks. You know, there doesn't need to be a flash sale of the items that was purchased by Burnetown Iowa community members. You know, I think if, if we're willing to give you a hard date, I think we need to determine that date, when that date comes. And if we're not fully, fully satisfied with our contract. I think there needs to be in writing and there needs to be a crystal clear in a mode of, of a merger or acquisition, however you want to call it, that, that keeps you know, all the gear, protecting the members of Burnetown Iowa. I think they're the ones that purchased this gear. You know, the, the mortgage and stuff like that, Mr. McCaskill, that'll all come from, you know, taxes and funds generated through the community. But I want to make sure, and I want to hear it from you guys. I mean, are you willing to? You know what I mean? To, to, to keep this stuff protecting the members of Burnetown Iowa?
We will follow what is filed with the Secretary of State's office and you all have copies of that. I understand that was given to the Cowie chief. And we will use their counsel as to how we do the dissolution of the 501(c)(3), which will have to occur. And there's some specific steps and that will be taken care of. We have a little over half a million dollars in debt and that will have to be satisfied before we can dissolve that. And so that means there's got to be.
I'm looking a little deeper than that though. I want to hear you on record.
So, so I cannot put on record because I am not aware of all the legalities of what we'll have to do. I will be in contact with the Secretary of State's office, get their counsel, how we could do that with a possible consolidation of departments, merger of the departments. And that will give us some time to develop some sort of workable plan to maintain service and to keep good service and the equipment that has been purchased in Burnetown by the tax dollars and by the fundraisers that firefighters themselves have done. In 1980, there was no tax, fire tax. That building was built by the community and fundraisers and whatever, so Station 1. And the land has some stipulations. We'll have to take care of that and we'll have to take care of dealing with the Baptist Association, which we have a a 25-year renewable lease on the property that Station 2 is built on. So there's more, this is not as simplistic as it may say, well, we'll just merge them. So you can make a decision, but as I guess ex officio chair of the board right now, I will follow what's the recommendation of the Secretary of State's office because that's what we operate under. You ask your counsel, that's what I have to do. Is that not correct?
That's rich part.
I have to follow our charter that's registered with the Secretary of State for that LLC.
Well, the, our, I mean, you, you've got the contract with the county that's going to trump your charter.
It's going to trump my charter?
Yeah. In other words, as far as your finances and, and what happens with your equipment, the, the agreement that was entered into between the county and fire and your fire department is going to take control of whatever your, your, your charter says.
Unless that was modified, I think, unless otherwise specified, specified in the charter in that contract.
The, the statute, there is a statute that governs dispersal of items from nonprofits. So I, I think the contract meets the guidelines of that statute. So I, I think it would end up being a process to go through.
And there is a process we have to go through.
And you're simply saying we're going to follow that process?
That's what I just said.
Yeah.
I don't know that I minced any words on that, did I? We will have to follow what the Secretary of State says according to our charter, what we have to do to follow those regulations. That's not a.
Warren, you know where it is better than I do in the contract, but it's, I think the contract says in the event of dissolution or in the event that you're not funded. What happens with the equipment?
Number seven. On my contract, it's on page four of my contract, number seven. In the event of liquidation or dissolution of the department pursuant to cessation of the service action by the department's board of directors, all equipment assets owned by the department or not otherwise required for retirement of unlawful debt will be distributed in accordance with the department's charter and the North Carolina Nonprofit Corporations Act. All assets, equipment, real property shall be assigned as follows by the dissolving department to its successor fire department and/or other fire departments in the county through and with approval of the board commissioner. So yeah, we reference, we reference the charter. We also reference the general statute. And, and the intent of that clause in that contract was to prevent a situation such as this so that the equipment stayed in the community. It didn't, it didn't go somewhere else. It's not that we're saying that it can't be done. It was just put in there to hopefully give some resolution to this conversation that if that were to ever have to happen, that that stuff stayed in the community that the folks paid for it.
That's what I'm concerned with.
There is a level of protection.
Can I come back? I don't, I'm not going to say anything different than what, I'm not going to repeat it though for sure. I think what I got from you, Josh, is you're just looking for that, as some others say in politics today, what's the common sense approach here? The common sense approach for this board member is I was the one that objected. Because in December, I was told by our chairman that we were off probation and that we were in good shape. Here I sit in May at a, at a surprise meeting and find out despite that, that we were off probation and it solved our problems. Now we're going to have to merge. So I'm surprised and I sit there and say, no, I'm against merging. If we follow our action plan that we have given you guys and we're given that time. And at, at any point, as I said, along there, we, I sit there as a board member and say, there's just no way we're going to get this done. Okay. Or we reach a timeframe that maybe you're going to define today, six months, whatever. If you don't do it, we're done. You're asking common sense, are you going to keep giving us the hassle over this thing? And this board member won't. Because I, I will, I, we got two more in the room too that could comment. That's, it's half of us here. Half the board, but we don't have everybody. So, but I mean. I, I, like I said, I accept mea culpa. You know, for, for having been on the board for more than two years and not had better insight to all this, but I did trust the information given to me. I didn't audit it and that's, that's where I'm at. So that's what I would be sitting there and saying on a board level.
I'm, I'm inclined to make a motion. We give them till July 31st. They come up with an agreement to compensate Cowie Fire Department. For their calls, we still have to page Cowie Fire Department as they're first out on these calls and July 31st, I think they should have two inspections by the fire marshal and in that timeframe. And if they're not up to make a kind of contract with the fire service of that department. We have no option but to to take action. That's, that's my conversation that. I mean, you heard the inspection team, they're actually 10 months now, so not eight months. You want a resolution to this?
I, I mean, I don't mean to, I'm just going to go a little deeper right here. And I feel like boards change, people change, departments change. You come back 10 years and there's likely, likely not to see the same face up here. You go back 25 years to your board. There's no telling. I mean, you may have a few members that are still around, but, but my point is Burnetown Iowa Fire Department's there to serve the people, you know, now and in the future, and people, it's intended for people to change. And I feel like change isn't always a bad thing, you know? I feel like your contract and your internal documentation probably needs to be looked at and corrected. We talked about that yesterday and I, I was expecting to see that on this corrective action plan. You know, with, with the way you hold your internal elections and some of your leadership stuff on the inside. And I, I just don't see, I'm just going to refer to it as the property across from Moody Home. I don't see, because, take this the wrong way, you're not on the board, that they pull the plug. They still need fire service and they still will appreciate a substation across, you know, from the Moody Home.
I understand that. I'm not, I'm not saying I'm going to be here 10, 25 years from now, any of those things. And I know change is inevitable. We're all going to have that. We haven't had an opportunity to do that. We did fire a couple of fire chiefs and that caused a lot of the internal conflict. Because they weren't keeping this up and that's what caused a split. There were some loyal people that elected them. That will probably be changed, but I can't change this. Yesterday I couldn't go and I don't have the power to order an, an executive order and say, we're going to do it this way from now on. Warren had a good suggestion that the officers of the operations be subject to putting in an application for the job. They'd be interviewed by the board and they'd be selected to be chief, assistant chief, our captain, rescue captain. You know, it's not a bad idea. We need to be more professional. And if they're not up to it. You know, these are the things you're going to be responsible for doing. And hopefully once we get some young people brought along that have the energy and the time and whatever that can do that, but you know, most of the jobs in our community are outside the community. We have very few people that are in the community during the daytime. I don't, the majority, 90% plus are probably medical calls. We don't need four vehicles, five vehicles and POVs in addition to the ones of us that are responding to respond to a, a lift assist or somebody's breathing. That's an overkill. So I think we can sit down, I think our board can sit down with Cowie's board and whatever, and we can work out a gentleman's agreement for the, for the July calls that they do. But at this point in time. That's what we've requested. Give us some opportunity to resolve some of the things the board did not know about. Give us some time to implement that and maybe change within our bylaws and our operating guidelines, guidelines, how those things take place.
Gentlemen?
I, I seen the statement down here. Allow us six to, six to 12 months to demonstrate diligent progress with corrective action and coordination and with leadership support to Cowie Fire Department. We, we put that at the end of July.
You moved it up. I understand that.
I support it, but we, we narrowed your timeframe there. Okay?
End of July. Barry?
You know, this is, it's, it's extremely hard. I mean, both of these fire departments are, you know, technically in my district, District 3. It's, it's a very difficult decision. I just feel like what we do up here a lot of times is we beat a dead horse and then we kick a can down the road. And at this time, I'm, I'm just not willing to do that. And I know it's hard and I'm going to make the motion and we'll see where it goes from there. But I would like to make a motion at this time that we terminate the contract of Burnetown Iowa Fire Department.
Hear commotion, uh, motion by Commissioner Breeden?
Second.
I'll second that motion.
I have a second by Commissioner Antoine. Any further discussion?
Is the issue here to take them to 30, did, yeah, here is correctly give them to the 31st of July?
No, sir. The, the motion on the floor is terminate contract. And I've, I've spent a lot of time here, Mr. McCaskill, and I feel like I was, I was looking for this last week. I'm going to support what Mr. Sherrill said, propose to the 31st. But I would expect a gentleman's agreement between you and Cowie and I would like to feel better about the assets. I gave you my word. I'm really counting on you and I do trust you. So I know, I know as Mr. Shill's referenced, that window's tight. But that's my discussion right here. And Mr. Breeden, I see where you're at.
And I think it's, it's really hard because it shouldn't be a gentleman's agreement. We should, we shouldn't even be in this situation, number one. Number two, it should be on paper. It should be more than a gentleman's agreement. You just talked about professionalism. It, it's just, it's a constant. You know, we, we, it's, tomorrows are turning into yesterday. I mean, it's just excuse after excuse. And for whatever reason, I don't know, it, it, you know, that doesn't matter. What matters is, is we're providing a level of service in that community. And that's all that really matters. And right now we're not providing that service without Cowie. So I just feel like it's time that we terminate that and I would say effective immediately.
I, and the only comment going back to what I said earlier, Mr. McCaskill. I have really great concern with your men and women on that department without quality training and everything else for the ones that do. It's, it's hard to, it's hard to know that your life or somebody else's life is at risk without without your trained people that's got your back. I have great concern for that.
All right, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Breeden, second by Commissioner Antoine to terminate.
Can you repeat the motion?
Mr. Breeden, you wanna repeat the motion or would you like Ms. Kizer?
My motion was to terminate the contract to Burnetown Iowa Fire Department effective immediately.
No.
She was just asking a question.
All right. You good? I'm sorry, I thought you were asking for clarification. All right. Motion on the floor, you have a second. All in favor, please signify by raising your right arm and stating aye for the record book.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Please let the record reflect 2, 3. This time, I'd like to make a motion, we have a drop dead date of 7/31 to, to call for another vote. All right?
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Young, second by Commissioner Shields. Any further discussion?
31st.
31st of July.
And in that process, they're gonna have a gentleman's agreement, two boards coming up with how to compensate Cowie for their times.
Mr. Sherrill, I feel like all of the discussion you're having right there is going to calculate into our decision, you know what I mean? And I'd like updates, I feel like I'd like to see you back at our next meeting. And, you know, here it is. And I was looking for leadership last week, here, I feel like here, you've got a heavy load to bear.
All right, anybody else?
2025.
7/31, 2025.
That's right.
All right, I have the motion.
The only other thing I would like to see is, by that date is, what you talked about, that general statute, if, if our contract trumps that or however that works, just make sure we know what's gonna happen. You know, hopefully, we don't have to go that route, but if we do, let's have a detailed plan of how those assets are gonna be dispersed.
And to your point, if, if this doesn't work out, help us with a smooth transition.
And one more question, this will be for Lori. How is their money in the new year? How, how is it paid out to one of the departments? Is it monthly or is it quarter?
Yes, it's paid monthly. It depends on, so whatever the tax department collects each month, so if they collect it in the month of July, then by August, on August 10th, we write a check for July's collections. So it is paid monthly.
Anybody else? Have a motion, have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by raising your right arm and stating aye. Aye. Any oppose? All right, please let the record reflect 5,0, Ms. Tammy. Thank you.
Good luck. Thank you.
All right, moving on here. I have other, but I saw Ms. Kathy McGahad back there. I know Mr. Sherrill referenced a Board of Health meeting last night. Do we have any updates for the, the county Board of Health?
Yes, we had, we had our Board of Health meeting last night and I was listening earlier, talking when you, Ms. Kizer and Mr. Sherrill was talking about openings that we have, many of the county openings that we have will be in our department. We have openings for environmental health and nurse positions and I just wanted to, to talk about, we, we do meet, we have met with Warren and Tammy and talked about the reasons why those positions are open. Many of the candidates we interview are stating salary levels that they're not receiving or not wanting to take the, the position. So, in, in environmental health, in addition to that, we have the positions open, but we're, we're really looking for already authorized candidates because right now we have, we have the staff that are authorized also training two to three candidates right now already. And there's, there's a capacity at which they can do training and get the work done that they need to get done to maintain, to continue to get those septic permits issued. So, we don't wanna just overload them with candidates that need training, because it just, it just can't happen with just, you know, the two that we have that are working to get everything done. So, if we have a candidate that comes that's already authorized and doesn't need that training, we, we keep the position open and they can, obviously, they can walk into the, the role. Right now, we're just not having that happen. The candidates that we're getting just barely, you know, are meeting the requirements to enter in as an intern and go through that training process. So, it's a, it's a balance there to keep the work flowing. So I hope that, that addresses your questions you had about the positions. And, you know, as far as the budget, we, I would like to talk a little bit about animal services. Warren and I have talked about the request for proposals gonna be going out soon for, so to, and I had submitted, we had talked about maintaining the positions that we increased this past year, the temporary positions. And really, it doesn't make any sense to request those to become permanent because we're in this kind of, you know, odd period of maybe possibly giving that to an outside organization in which we'd have to go through a riff, you know, with those positions anyway. So, that, that makes sense. So if we can continue with those positions being temporary like they are now, which I think that I have, talking to Warren identified some, notified that I have some carryover money and some agreement addenda contracts with the state that I could possibly use for these temporary positions. So, it didn't make sense to add them to the budget request at this time. So with those, those considerations, I did wanna make, make you aware that I have every intention on keeping those positions staffed for as long as we need to in the upcoming year, it's just not gonna be a request on the budget itself.
Chairman, I might wanna add, we, we have had those discussions and obviously there's some good questions. You know, we, this board has been very involved with other agencies, particularly the school board, we've had good relationship with them. You know, it might be something that this board may wants to sit down and have a joint meeting with the Board of Health sometime and discuss some of these, these issues and that way we're, we can deal with those face to face and that, that might help that communication process between the boards.
When you say that, I'm sitting here thinking about, and I'm sure this is gonna be off the wall and I'm sorry, Mr. Allen, but I've often wondered why we don't take some of the permitting, septic, well, it's already with our inspection department and talk about that in-house. Is there, is that something we could do at some point, Mr. Caver, talk about?
I think Kathy has to maintain the oversight of that program. She could probably delegate the responsibilities to some other, the day-to-day responsibilities. I think ultimate authority has to fall under her by statute. But, long story short, I think she could delegate it somewhere, but I think.
That would have to be under my authority and right now, I'm not, I'm not over connected with building inspections and code at all at this point, other than just a, I think a very strong partnership that it works out. We're co-located, Joe and I work well together and we, we are continually looking for ways to improve how things are between the two departments. And part of that process has been to get this new software, you know, work management system to connect us even more. By, that, and biggest benefit of the system is to increase the communication between the two programs faster and, and to be able to communicate with the public easier. So we're, I mean, we know that that, that just makes everything run smoother in our county and so we're continually looking for ways to do that.
Yeah, I can't speak about the software. Our hope in the software is, unfortunately, I kinda got in on tailing of the software, but our hope of the software is that we're gonna be all using the same software instead of using two different software, two different ways of going about our jobs. Environmental health, rewatching and building inspection plan are all gonna use the same software, so hopefully that's what. We have, we do have quite a bit of problems. And it's come up a bit lately in communications, contractors, homeowners, owners who like using the same software. Hopefully that will resolve some of that.
Right in the middle of that process, so.
And I, and I will, I will say this, in that process is completely different. The more I look at it, the more I see it's gonna be quite, not like for us, but for the contractor, they're running this duty, because it's completely different. I saw that, so it's gonna take.
What do you mean, applications or you mean?
Well, anytime you change the way you do something, there's an adjustment period. The more I've seen of this, and Tammy, have you been able to watch any of it? There's a lot more steps on our end to get your permit issued or to get through approvals than what we currently have now. Now, that may lead to better communication between departments and I don't think that the application process is gonna be any more difficult for the consumer, the contractor, but our end, we're gonna be, it's gonna slow us down because we've got so many extra steps to go through this process.
It does promote us to be extremely thorough.
Yeah.
Because we have to cover, you know, check all the boxes and, but it will allow the public an opportunity to see progress without having to call us every time they wanna know where they're at in the, in the steps, which I think if they're logging in to their application, then they can see where they're at and it will flag things that they need to, if there's something they need to do, so that we're not having to actually call or they're not having to call us to ask, you know, what's needed to be done. So that, I think that's going to help the public who obviously are more and more able, they're used to doing the work online and stuff that, you know, we're moving in that direction. So, I think that's gonna be a real benefit to having this system.
Well, my take at the meeting last night is, as I stated before, I'm a professional ditch digger and you get in there to these doctors and dentists and they're talking all this medical terminology, so that you lose me, but when you, when you start talking about money and you start talking about economic development and stuff like that, then, then I can join in your conversation. And last night, it was presented with the fees scheduled for the health department as it was last year. And, and of course, I abstained on all the votes, of course, it will be presented, but me as a member of the health board, we got into a conversation about what, at the time, Mr. Higdon was talking about waiving environmental fees for wastewater and all this stuff to try to give some type of incentive to contractors and everybody to help with developments and stuff like that. And so, before that time, we got a presentation of, of I care for children and all this other stuff and it was a free service. And, but it still takes, takes money from somewhere, it's not free. Then we went in depth more than that, but my question was, was how do we choose what taxpayers' monies we give to a different or an organization for a service when we have other people in services that they don't get it for free? How do we, you know, it's, it's a difficult thing because as the manager stated, I think it was $250 million increase in property, and I'm assuming that was new construction that, that added that. Well, these folks are coming in here and spending $250 million, it will be paying taxes on that, but all we do is charge them. They don't get anything, they don't get, and it's more, not more for the homeowner, it's for developers and, you know, it's an economic development driver. It's, a lot of governments give incentives for people to, to develop things. We're always talking about housing shortages, we're talking about, you know, affordable housing and stuff like that. Well, people that are gonna invest in affordable housing is not gonna do it to go bankrupt. But what could we do to say, thank you for spending your money in this county that gives us the, what's our land values in Macon County? 12, 12 billion or something like that? I mean, so, these are fun, funds that people pay in that we use those funds to do other things with. That, that's just, that was my input and, and it was a big discussion about it and, but anytime in my mind as a private sector guy that we can do to help people to invest, then we should be looking at it. That's the only thing really I had to say.
I think, John, when I talked about this years ago, when Paul brought this up, it's, it's really hard, you get into a really tricky situation here, waive fees for some people and don't for other, and I think that's the point that you were talking about. Two things came to my mind, we got Economic Development Commission, we got somebody wanting to develop, and we said a little bit, I'd help them with the permitting fees. Hey, we'll give you $1,000 grant to get started on your permitting fees in Macon County. That's probably the best way that we can go around doing it, instead of trying to figure out, one of our departments is trying to figure out, do we waive the fees for this person? Is he a developer, is he, what do we, how do we waive the fees for this person and not for somebody else? But I think you run them Economic Development Commission, give them a little bit of money and hand out to them for, to pay for permitting fees. I think that's the easiest, cleanest way to get that. I will tell you this, funny story, Walmart, everybody's been, if you've been to Walmart lately, you know they've been going to remodel. Talk about the fees. They wrote down, we, we's charged with square footage, building inspection charged with square footage. They, they put down the square footage of that building, the complete building, the whole square footage of it. I had Bob Chris call the contractor three times, tell them, we just need square footage for what they're working on, because we charged with square footage. The bill was ridiculous, the, the permit fee was like eight or nine thousand dollars because they put down the whole square footage. I called, had them call three times, they get wrote the same number down three times. So evidently Walmart didn't care. You know, they didn't care, I mean, I was like, dude, you're not doing the whole building, you're doing like a third of the building. So there's some people who just don't care.
Right. But anyways, that was my comment to that. It became a question as to, well, you know, we would be overrun by permits, well, there would be strings attached to that, that you pay X and then after your construction is finished, then you get X back from it.
All right, Ms. Kathy, thank you.
And I will be bringing the fees to the, to your consideration.
All right, thank you.
I'm, I'm interested in actually having that meeting with the Board of Health, how do we do that?
Okay, well, all right, we have a, a board member requesting a meeting with your Board of Health. I guess we just need to pull the calendar up and find a date?
Yeah, we can think about whether, whether we meet on their night or whether we have them come in on your night or whether you set a special date and we could, we can reach out to the chairman and, I'm assuming, and see what, what we can probably work out, if, whatever the board desires.
Just out of a professional courtesy, why don't we do that? We'll have two weeks before our, our, our next meeting, right?
Your meeting's on June the 10th.
So maybe, could you guys coordinate with your boards and maybe facilitate a date?
Sure.
What do you think, Commissioner Breeden?
The billing guide and fees as discussion point during that meeting or?
No, I think, speaking on behalf of myself, I think we go through, you know, normal business and I think we set aside more time, probably. and I think we set aside more time, probably, is it closed session? Would it be open session? Would you rather? Joint meeting?
Uh, I mean, if it's general discussion, it would be open meeting, correct, Eric? Um, if it was anything more, it would have to be, if you're talking personnel, it'd be closed session or something like that.
What are we talking, Barry?
Personnel.
Personnel.
Closed. I can go in closed session.
Okay. Okay. Well, uh, Mr. Cabe, could you just report back to us on the 10th?
Yes. Do you want to? Yes. I'll give you a date by the 10th. Is that what you're asking for?
Yes, sir. A date. Okay. All right. Good enough.
Only other thing that I really, I got a text message earlier and thank goodness you sent it, but, uh, the planning board meeting is, uh, is canceled again. Uh, and they have no direction, no guidance, no reason to meet. Uh, and so, you know, I try to schedule everything that I do around all these meetings, and I haven't yet to. One of the meetings they had, I was in the hospital, but, uh, but other than that, I've been race ready for a meeting and it's been canceled every time. I, I don't know unless, I think we need to look into this planning board, uh, and dive into this as well, as to importance, not importance, um, uh, because you've got a bunch of members. Some members won't be able to the meeting because there's friction there. And I think our ordinance is, um, our policy is, is 11 members, um, and trying to get 11 members to agree on anything if they have something to talk about is very difficult. And, um, so in the future, I think we need to look at this and either, um, you know, the current board, dissolve the current board and, and look at our policy, maybe reduce the size of it, or, um, our body just act as the, uh, planning board for Macon County.
I believe, I don't think we can, Kevin.
I think you can act as the planning board. It puts a substantial, um, burden on you regarding certain issues. And you can likewise, um, you can reduce the board number, um, that might make it easier to get, uh, more.
Yeah. I'm, I'm, I'm okay with reducing board number. I've heard the number five thrown around a lot. I, I don't like five, and I'll tell you guys why. If we're gonna keep a, a member from Highlands and a member from Franklin, Highlands and Franklin could determine how we, pretty much, they gotta, they gotta leg up and determine how we conduct our business in Macon County. So I think if we reduce the size, I would want to go, I'd say seven would be the number. They said get one person to go with them and they've got the majority.
At what point for the county planning board does someone from the city of Franklin and the city of Highlands play in our planning board? They have their own planning board and they don't ask one of our body members to serve on their board.
That's true. True. I, I'm assuming that probably when that started, it was a courtesy to keep them involved because they were within the county, but you're right.
So, I mean, I, I, you know, when you reduce the size and you, and when you appoint people to these boards that are completely committed for the betterment of this county and its citizens, then I think we've got the battle won. Uh, and not to say that the ones who are serving now don't, but there's just, they, it seems like there's that divide, and I think if we shrink that board if necessary, I think it's gonna be a much better, more productive board.
All right, so to Barry's.
Seven, seven members?
Well, if we, if we, I mean, that's a discussion. If you're gonna take the representative from town of Highlands and town of Franklin out, then, I mean, you take that out.
And all this other stuff. We're not there representing the people out in the county because they don't really.
Well, yeah, those board members are, they're, and their job is to represent that municipality. They're not, they're representing that municipality. They're not representing the county as a whole.
And they're good people, but both municipal districts have a lot more regulation and impervious surface, you know, and people are a creature of habit. And we're, we're more focused on rule, which I guess, you know. All right. All right, back to the budget. Um, I just really wanna leave today with very clear direction to our county manager and our finance department. Is there anything else that you gentlemen, you know, wanna add, subtract, discuss? I feel like we've hit most of our departments. You know, contingency is something that I kinda gave my opinion on. Is there another opinion on contingency?
Uh, I think I had pretty much the same opinion last time. Um, you know, I'd like to see the schools get that. I would still like to find out where we are with Southwestern. You know, we're increasing them at a clip, probably greater than any other, I mean, you're talking over a hundred thousand dollars a year over the last three years, average. That's, that's quite a bit, um, for something that there is no minimum requirement. You know, the capital needs part of it, I mean, I understand there are capital needs, but it would be nice to address those as they come instead of just giving them a blank check for capital needs and then, um, would be my thought on that, but.
And the 287,000 or whatever, or you said it was 390 for the Southwestern?
Their, their current year operating is 397, 567, and then 129,092 capital.
So the way, when we, when you, when you all allocate operating funds to Southwestern, so the operating piece gets divided by 12 and it's sent to them each month. The capital piece, I require them to make the capital investment first, then provide a copy of the check and the invoice, and then I reimburse them. That's how that money's handled. And just for this upcoming budget, what's keyed at the moment, we've got 510,439 for operating, and that does pick up that position. So our county maintenance department budget went down by one position. SCC's budget went up by one maintenance position. They will now have their own employee, you know, that they'll be directing for cleaning and maintenance of the facility. And then the other piece of that is there's one, 125,600 for capital. Just to clarify the, the pieces of their budget and how it's handled.
But I feel like that, the maintenance position is, is somewhat smoke and mirror, correct? We facilitated the, the maintenance position to them anyways, but now they just encompass that on their own? Is that, is that accurate?
Yeah, you, you funded, you're the.
We funded it the whole time, now we're just.
You're, you're giving them.
They have total control instead of having to call us and gripe about mulch and trimming bushes and.
That's correct.
That will be an SCC employee, not a county employee. So it's just moving funds from our, our maintenance line to the SCC line.
And then the current employee that was doing that is moving.
To a vacant position in maintenance, so we won't fill that position.
So we're just, one, the one vacancy in maintenance will go away.
I feel good about that.
So we're not displacing anyone, you know, within the county. It's just we happen to have a vacancy. We can move the SCC kind of person into, on our side to work, and then we'll eliminate one position in maintenance.
You know, I think the, the contracting out of Parker Meadows has been a hit. Um, it's, I mean, I've heard nothing but good things and I've seen it myself. It's, I feel like that was a good move.
Well, and, and one of the things we're planning on with that, we, we know that our greenway is getting a lot of abuse. Uh, it gets a lot of use. Uh, we're actually looking at some improvements on the, the north end to have to do with the bridge and some temporary parking there for those folks, so that's in the works. Um, what we're hoping is when this settles out at Parker Meadows, we can use some of those folks a little more effectively to help keep the greenway up, because there's, that's a seven day a week process there to make sure the stuff's taken care of on the weekends. Instead of us having to come and ask for a position somewhere, make a little better use of, to be a little more efficient on what we've got to make that work. So that's kinda where we're headed with that.
What about the maintenance department? What have they identified that, that they're working on? You know, we've done a lot of, uh, stuff over the last few years. Have they, what's in there for them to improve, you know, county facilities? I know we're working on the library and kind of this other stuff, but.
We've, uh, in the capital improvement plan, we mentioned another HVAC package and a generator package. Part of that has to do with this building to make sure that the, uh, the elevators and all of that stuff functions during a power outage, and even part of our administrative buildings are not, um, covered by a generator. And then this doesn't necessarily, it may involve them or it may not, you know, it seems to be the priority of the board is space needs of our internal departments. Uh, particular Board of Elections is, is a big one. Uh, Veteran Services has been brought up. Um, we really need to take a sit down after the first of the year, which is that conversation we need to have about the fund balance we have, what we'll have coming up, address some of those, whether that's taking some of the space we have and making it more efficient and making those folks a better place to be, or whether we have to acquire another place somewhere. That, that's the big projects. Um, the, the generator needs, the, uh, uh, HVAC stuff, make sure we maintain that, and of course the general maintenance and upkeep on the buildings we've got. And then the bigger projects we've got coming up, that's not necessarily maintenance, but something we need to talk about is, of course, the armory building, um, direct park plans, uh, and tying all those back together.
And then, well, some of these are really, um, and I shouldn't say some of them, but like you were talking about the Board of Elections, I think that if that office was moved, it would pay for itself. It, it's not gonna be, because they can have their elections in-house instead of operating on the state requirements out at Public Security Department, because they can't have them downstairs because it's not ADA compliant.
And, and one of the things I'd like to do, of course, sometimes we talk a lot, but I wanna put a lot of thought into that one, because the last thing I wanna do is put them somewhere that we think will work, because that's what we have available, but yet it doesn't meet the long range needs of that voting process and the, the stuff there. So I think within a couple of months, we can get a really good grasp on that and, and address some of those within the, using some of the fund balance we got and put in the capital improvement plan and fund those.
And in the future, have discussions of what we're gonna do for the senior center and.
Correct.
I mean, that's, I still haven't talked to him, Danny may have, but, um, about, I know the parking issue and stuff like that. Well, are the, the bill, are the building that you have, is it adequate?
The building is not adequate. So it's not, at the senior center, it's not just a parking issue. The building itself is not adequate, and it's a, and a lot of it is a safety issue. So, I mean, if I wanted to see anything, I'd like to see us looking at possibly a new space for them. Um, you know, as an idea, something that was kicked around was the old Kmart building, you know, perhaps looking into, um, a purchase of that building and perhaps using that for, not just for senior center, because that's a huge building, but, you know, possibly some, consolidate some of the departments in there. Um, and next thing to consider too, with the senior buil, with the seniors building, um, the sale of that building, the current building will go towards the purchase price of the new building. So it's not like we're gonna be on the hook for like just a whole new, you see what I'm saying, a whole new structure. So there's a lot of variables there, but if I'd like to see anything, I'd like to see a plan for a new senior center.
And moving forward, long range, um, I think the, uh, the justice center would be, is in a much, much needed, uh, in Macon County. And, uh, and that would be an investment as well to, uh, because when you redo the jail and stuff like that, it's, uh, if you did in-house meals instead of contracting those meals out and stuff like that. So those are just, um, uh, things while I'm on the board that, uh, at least know something's happening with, uh, with the conversation piece, but anyways. But as far as the budget, um, you know, now that we've had everything, the work sessions and everything else, I think, um, understanding that the, uh, school has increased, but it didn't increase to the point of what they were asking. And, so, I mean, I think it's a good budget.
Ms. Shields?
Where did we land on the Highlands, um, uh, athletic field on that 75,400 design piece? Where did we?
Well, my, my personal take on that was that's part of the reason we pledged all of our contingency fund to them.
Okay.
Yeah, they can make that decision.
If they want that.
They feel like that's a priority.
And I, I think that's kinda what we did. We kinda handed them, we showed them all of our cards and, and handed them all the, all the free capital we have. And we, they're an elected body, and in my opinion, it's not fair for us to hand them money and say, you have to spend it here, you know? If they wanna.
We built that into their budget.
Yeah. I mean, to Mr. Scherle's point, we couldn't fund them everything they asked, but I feel like in good faith, we funded everything we could. And, and the mill rate never went up. We funded everything we could fund, and I feel like that's a pretty, you know, I feel like it's a pretty good compromise.
And, Mr. Cabe, I think you answered this. I just probably need to revisit it with you, uh, on our nonprofits, uh, program. I believe we've got monies for it this year.
There's 75,000 that we have budgeted this year, which there's no way we're gonna be able to appropriate that by the first of July. So we'll roll that over into next year. We can do a budget amendment, roll that over into next year, which is July 1, address the expenditure of that. And then if the board so desires mid-year and you wanna approach the community funding pool and, and when we have our mid-year review, you wanna fund that community funding pool mid-year, then we can obviously address that if that's the agreement of the board. I will tell you, and I was gonna mention this as part of my other discussions, um, you talked about the planning board with 11 members, community funding pool has 13. It says shall have 13. Uh, as of today, I think we've got nine applications. So we're struggling to get the people there. So in June, we need to have a conversation on, on where we're gonna go with, with that.
We've got two. I, I mean, nine, that's.
We do have nine, yes, but we're required to have 13. And honestly, I would prefer that we had 15 applications or 16 applications, and that way you're, you can select and choose whom you want on that, who you want on that committee. I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead. Well, I was gonna say, the only clarification, and this may be at the end, uh, Lori and I know, we, we've got the position stuff squared away, uh, we'll prepare you proposals with different tax rates for Coliseum Gorge Fire and Rescue. And then is, you're gonna get a consensus of the board, the contingency money that we have to appropriate all of that to schools' operating expenditures?
Or what's left?
Well, there's 200,246 dollars plugged, so you can give all of that, or whatever amount of that, if you wanted to add that to the schools, you know, and of course I'm speaking of the proposed budget.
And that's sort of the reason why I asked about the maintenance. Are there things out there that some of this money should, um, I mean, we need to make sure we're covered and then by all means.
John, I'm, I'm pretty comfortable. I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with where we're at. I'm pretty comfortable because we're gonna be active in the year addressing those. So I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with where we're at, and I think going into the fall, I think you'll see a lot of progress towards some of those things that we'd like to see. It's just gonna take us, we gotta get the direction of the board, we gotta get pointed in the right direction, get a consensus on where we wanna go, and, and we'll go. So I, I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with that.
But back to Danny's, um, you know, he, he'd like to see some kind of funding for a senior center. I mean, is that something that, that contingency money could help get the ball rolling, or is that just something that?
The, the contingency money's not enough to really get you anywhere. That's something that we may wanna look at if, if you wanna look at debt service, whether or not we can afford that somewhere down the line. That's a conversation we can have when we get our capital improvement plan and see which of those projects you want to, to move on. And I was just gonna tell you, you know, Lori and I have discussed contingency. Typically, you put money in there to use during the year. We're both okay if that goes to zero, and I'm gonna tell you why. Because she and I can't move those funds anyway. So therefore, mid-month, we had something come up that we need those funds, we have to come to you and get board approval to use those funds. So it's just as easy for you to say, well, we're gonna pull it out of fund balance, or unassign fund balance versus pulling it out of contingency. It, it doesn't help she and I any as far as having that money in contingency. So we're, we're okay with that going to zero, depending on what you wanna do with it.
Well, one last idea that I had, uh, and it addresses some of the capital needs, and Lori might, probably won't like it, but we are putting money in our fund balance every year. So when Mitch came and did that capital improvement plan, he talked about if we fully funded our capital improvement plan with the idea that we would get that grant for East Franklin, it would cost us, if we started right now, it would cost the taxpayers 1.9 pennies to do that. do that, which is nine pennies to do that. If we raised taxes 1.9 pennies, we could fully fund it if we got the grant. Another thing we could look at doing is taking that money that we put into the fund balance, which would roughly be 2.6 million, is what that 1.92 sends us, is that correct? Taking that 2.6 million and start putting it into that capital reserve fund to fund our capital improvement plan, and then whatever's left that we would normally put in, you know, if it's 400,000 or a million, go ahead and put that in the fund balance. But we could start funding that capital improvement plan right now and not cost the taxpayers any money.
And I don't have a problem with that, but you as a board just have to understand, once you move it to capital reserve, it must be used for capital purposes. You cannot move it back for normal operating, so I don't have a problem at all.
There are plenty of capital needs, so that would address our justice center, our senior center, obviously, if we got the grant for the school, that would factor into that, but.
So the state recommendation to that is 20%. It's not law, it's, it's a recommendation from the state, it used to be 8%, they raised it up to 20%. We've always been told that Macon County is 25%. Well, I think it turns out that that was just a gentleman's agreement, there's nothing on the books.
We have a formal policy.
Well, we do have a formal policy, it's 25%.
Back in August, I believe it was.
Which is roughly 17 million dollars of our budget, or 17 million dollars, is that right?
I don't know, I haven't calculated it, but.
Is the state, is it 20% or is it 11?
20%.
For a county our size, it's 20% is the recommended.
And 20%.
And that's just so you don't get, you don't want the LGC looking at this board saying, hey, you're in financial trouble, you know, so that's just a benchmark that they look at, is 20%.
And they don't want, the state, if all heck breaks loose, the state don't want to have to come in and bail out failing counties, so that's.
I think you can find the middle ground, I, I think with Mitch's help and that capital improvement plan, and look at our debt service, I think you can find a middle ground and say, okay, here's the percentage we're comfortable with, here's what we can set aside in a capital reserve fund, and here's what's left that finds that middle ground to meet the needs that you need, and then still keep you on the tax rate that you want to. I think that's doable.
And right now, we are, how much do we have in our fund balance, after the 20 million for the schools, 28?
I don't have that right in front of me, sorry.
25% of our budget, 16 million dollars, or a little over 16 million dollars, so we're.
Yeah, 11 million.
Well, ahead of it, which is great, but if we started chipping away at that capital improvement, that's just something to think about.
And, and that's a good plan, that's why, when I talk about the mid-year review, your audit will come back in October-ish, November-ish.
November, December.
You'll get the report November, December, you'll know if that fund grew, if it didn't grow, which, which branches those funds went to, that gives you the basis, particularly January and February, you can lay that groundwork and say, here's where we want to be. Then when we have these discussions next year at this time, you'll have the groundwork laid for a lot of those things you want to accomplish, and it makes this discussion a lot easier, because you've already, you've already got on that path. And much like the school discussion you had, that, that gives us the direction on how to point stuff where you want to be.
I've got another suggestion. Planning board. If you think of the name, planning board, we almost could rebrand the identity we have here internally into more of a planning board for like, space needs, you know, you talk about senior center, Board of Elections, you know, if you were to kind of have that group more hyper-focused on, you know, planning, talk to Josh Carpenter with the Southwest Commission, and, and look into some rebranding of buildings, if you were to move, I don't want to drop names, but Danny already dropped the Kmart, but if you were to move, you know, the senior center to Kmart per se, and then senior center pops up, maybe that could be Board of Elections, and you kind of just could plan, you know? So obviously, that's just a good, healthy discussion, but, you know, then they could bring recommendations back to this board.
And what?
Food for thought. All right, I think, I mean, does anybody else have anything pertaining to this budget?
I just want to, I want to clarify contingency money, where, where, where would you like for me to put it?
We need to know if it's at current expense or capital, because that makes a difference. Current expense, I divide by 12, send them a check every month. Capital, they have to spend it, and then we reimburse them, so, for Macon County schools.
And you can split it, I mean, you, you don't have to put the whole thing, you could divide it any way you want to.
I mean, the way I look at it, is they asked for about 3 million dollars, we're handing them about 400,000, and then here's the 200 that we still have, I'd say, I'd say, I'd say, no, just hand it to them.
Just hand, yeah.
Hand it to them.
They came at us, they need 75,000 for this, they need 200,000 for this, they need, it's their elected body, here's your money.
And then they can't say that, you know, it's coming at them in small increments.
It'll be in their fund balance.
Yeah.
That's all I need, Mr. Scherle.
All right, so I, I feel like we're gonna need to adjourn this meeting and re-advertise for the public hearing, right?
It's already advertised, so you can just adjourn, and we'll come back, unless we need another work session.
Or 10th of June, I mean, that's when we have our next meeting.
Up hearings on the 10th?
Yeah.
When we have our next meeting.
So it's, the joint meeting with the health board is not gonna happen before.
He's gonna report back to us on some dates.
On the 10th.
Oh, and you said that was gonna be in closed session, so that would have to be, okay, I got you.
Probably looking into July, August, you know, July summertime, it'll be an August, September meeting most likely. All right, looking for a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Breeden, second, Mr. Shields, all in favor, please raise your right arm, state aye.
Aye.
Five oh.